To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that and welcome to the Carver County Board of Commissioners meeting, September 23rd, 2025. It's a special meeting and work session. And we are going to move into item 1.2, public comments that relate to an item on the agenda may be heard when the... You can come to the podium and talk about an item we don't have on our agenda that we will speak about later. That's how that comes out. We will ask you to speak for only five minutes. I have a timer right here. So if you see me looking at that thing, I'm not on Facebook. I have a timer. So who would like to speak first? Welcome.
Thank you.
If we can get your name and address.
Yes, my name is Monique and I live in Chaska. Do you need my full address?
Sure.
10615 Puppets Lane, Chaska. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and give my public comment. I really appreciate that about this meeting. I'm here to exercise my First Amendment right as a citizen of Carver County. We just participated in professing the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Are we willing to be true to this pledge, United States of America? It doesn't seem united right now, unfortunately. One nation under God. I looked up why this part was added in 1954 and it refers to stewardship of moral laws and societal values. Something to think about. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Right now, only some of us have liberty and justice. And I have never seen us more divided. I am here to express my dismay about Sheriff Cameroud's decision to contract with ICE to provide cells for detaining migrants picked up by ICE. There are many examples of unidentified agents surrounding someone and not telling them why they are being taken, providing them no due process. I witnessed this myself on September 9th at the immigration court in the federal Whipple building at Fort Snelling, which is our local immigration court. I was there as an observer. A young man, probably in his twenties, alone, named Alex, was told his case was dismissed, and I'm quoting the judge, because only the United States government gets to decide what cases are heard. It wasn't what she said, but how she said it in a demeaning way. That bothered me. She said he had 30 days to appeal and the translator repeated this. He left the courtroom and I followed him, following my heart, and immediately he was surrounded by four unidentified men that I assume were ICE agents and swept down the hall into another hallway. I followed them, asking, where are you taking Alex? I said his name a number of times so he would know someone was witnessing what was happening. Then they put a key card in the door, unlocking it, and just like that, they were gone. After they disappeared through the door, I was in some kind of shock and I wept. Another woman who was there following me hugged me and we wept together over the cruelty of what we had just witnessed. I don't know where he is or if he will be granted the opportunity to appeal or if he has already been deported. All I know is he is a human being with brown skin. He was alone and terrified. Many times today, I wonder about where he is and what he might be going through. Many of the people being taken into custody have lived here for a long time, some as many as 35 years. Many of them have been working hard and paying taxes. Some who have been picked up are citizens. I don't know if he will be deported to a country he has never seen or if he has family here that he will be separated from. I know one thing, that I do not recognize the country we are living in. In connecting with the local Latino community, I have heard stories of fear, fear of going to work, the grocery store, taking kids to school. I try to imagine what it would be like to experience that kind of fear constantly or to be unable to go to work or feed my family. We are all human beings. I am not alone in how I feel. About the sheriff contracting with ICE, he doesn't have to do it. If more local police departments would stand up against this terror, it would make a difference. Every Saturday, there are hundreds of people like me that share my values. We are out on 41 in Hazeltine from 1:00 to 2:00 with protest signs and good and bad weather, standing up for our values against the plethora of unlawful and unconstitutional actions being forced upon our country by the current administration. We are citizens you represent. I hope we can come together and unite, come together and discover what we have in common and treat our fellow human beings like we want our own families to be treated. I will be reaching out to each one of you to see if we can get to know each other better and if there is a possibility of changing this trajectory, let's not fall into the trap of dehumanizing our neighbors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to speak?
Monique, that was a great use of time. It was 4:56.
Hello, my name is Peggy Denette. I guess I'm a foreigner because I live in Jordan.
Peggy, okay.
Yes.
You live in Jordan, okay.
Yes, I do. But I'm part of the region and I'm part of the human family. I wanted to start first, the idea that what's going on is somehow widely popular throughout the entire country and I'd like to dispute that. First of all, less than 50% of the popular vote even went to what's going on here. A lot of people don't realize that. 49.81% only went to what's going on. But in fact, the majority of the Minnesotans certainly disapprove of this effort to deport people without a court hearing and without due process. Two out of three Americans, 68%, believe that undocumented immigrants should be allowed to stay legally in the U.S. and that should be our priority. The support for this is rising and disapproval of it is rising as well. I hope you are aware of that. It's the mean thing, this against our constitution to put people away and grab them off the streets and shove them into places where they've never been and never heard of and where they don't speak the language. It's morally intolerable. I don't want to play any part in this tragedy, this misery and this suffering. History may not repeat itself, but it rhymes. So everyone that has a part in making this easy and greasing the wheels and allowing this to happen, we are all guilty of this. And when we die and we have our life review, we're going to see that we stood and we had choices and the ones that we make are extremely, extremely important. I hear this story that, well, my grandparents did it the right way. You know what the right way was? It was they got off a boat and they got in a line and they got a stamp in their passport and that was it. And look what they've done. Look who we are. Most of us here have come out of that tradition. And it meant that those people that needed to come here and wanted to come here, they did come here and they did wonderful things and they built what we have. And the people that are coming now, they are doing wonderful things too. They're helping us in our hospitals, they're helping us in our restaurants and they're helping us in our construction and all kinds of things. And they are wonderful contributors to what's going on here. They're wonderful people and they work really hard. And they're not animals. And this kind of thing of what's going on is absolutely, it's stupid, okay? It's stupid politically because now it's not supported. It's really stupid economically of how many businesses and things are being affected by this. It's really stupid religiously, okay? Because you cannot tell me that Jesus spoke in this name. Maybe the people that are quoting Jesus are saying that this is the way to go, but this is not morally supportable. It's humanly wrong. And none of us, we must not be part of this. We have a chance to go along or a chance not to go along. And the things that we decide are meaningful. And I just think that, again, history perhaps doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes. And they say, where were you when this was going on, when the concentration camps were being filled? Where were you, Grandma? Well, that's the thing. Where are we? Where are we and what are we doing with our choices, okay? Because we do have them and we can make them and we have to, okay? We have to. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Nobody else?
We just care to support them.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. The agenda review and adoption.
You have approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion by Uterman and a second by Lynch. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Approval of the September 2nd, 2025 minutes. Can I get a motion?
Some of...
I got a motion by Anderson, a second by Fahy to approve the September 2nd, 2025 minutes. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Community announcements, my favorite part. Mr. Lynch?
Well, I would, I think we had a life-changing event in our country when we watched the assassination of Charlie Kirk and hopefully that will bring the country closer together. I watched a memorial service with hundreds of thousands of people there and it was absolutely nothing but prayer and prayer and positive thoughts. So let's do that without burning stuff down. And go Gophers.
Darn right. They took the weekend off. Kusar Fahy will get on the line.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I wanted to say congratulations on September 10th. We celebrated our community and honored some individuals and organizations that have generously contributed to making Carver County a great place to live, work and play. And those individuals who received those awards in philanthropy were Darrell Sudheimer, Elroy Lotzik, and then also Sage Lock Corporation located here in Chaska. I know Darrell and Elroy personally and they are just individuals that who have contributed their time, their talents and their resources and have made a huge impact on Carver County. So congratulations to them. Also, Commissioner Workman and I, last week, traveled to Washington, D.C. We had some great interactions with Amher Smith and Cloverchar and others. And it was encouraging to and support the city of N.Y.A.'s future wastewater needs, the city of Waconia and their frontage road, and also the city of Victoria with County Road 11 and Highway 5 request. And then all of the support for Highway 5 through Carver County was very productive. And then also just the request for the Minnesota Surface Transportation Reauthorization as we continue to push that legal ease into the system. That went well. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Debbie Marsh, who's been working in the Assessor's Office for 50-plus years at Carver County on her retirement. Congratulations, Debbie. And then on September 10th, also, the Carver County Development Agency in the city of Carver with some other local leaders, we gathered to celebrate the grand opening of Carver Place. It's a new 60-unit housing complex designed to serve low-income families in Carver County. It's located on Hartwell Drive and sharing a parking lot with the Carver Crossings, which is another development generated through the CDA. And it's the CDA's mission to expand affordable housing options for residents earning below the county medium income. Also, part of that ribbon cutting, we marked the 45th anniversary of the Carver County CDA. CDA was established in 1980 as a Carver County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And over the decades, the agency's objectives has expanded to include commercial development, countywide marketing strategies, workforce, senior housing initiatives and long-term growth planning. So congratulations to the CDA. And then on a personal note, it's homecoming week at Central High School in Norwood Young America, the fall season for football, volleyball and also cross-country. So good luck to all the fall sport participants. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Uterman.
Mr. Chair, I processed some of the events the last weeks, but also the last months. And I hear what Commissioner Lynch is saying, but I think some of these things are unthinkable when you think about Melissa and Mark and Fletcher and Harper and Charlie and having a six and 10-year-old that go to local schools and being there for lunch yesterday. It's sad that we have to look at our buildings differently. It's also somewhat sad that we have to look at our roles differently. And I think that all of us, five, sit in a position of influence in ways that sometimes we take for granted. And so I've been having conversations and trying to figure out what is it that we can do up here on some of the topics that are coming our way. It's not lost on me that 26 will be an opportunity to either build unity or build division. It's going to be hotly contested elections. Arguably, the district that I represent is the most politically diverse in the county and we have to make room for both of those conversations. And so one of the things I do is I zip to Minneapolis and I ran the lakes. I love Lake Harriet. If anybody wants to join me, they're welcome to do so. And it was just weighing on me, you know, how we can have more conversations with maybe people that we disagree with on a regular basis. And so I sat down, a guy named George, let me sit down next to him, about an 85-year-old guy. And I said, what are we supposed to do with all this stuff going on in our community? And George says, can I tell you, can I tell you a story? And I think we can tell a lot through stories. And he says, I was sitting here however many days ago, and he said, my son came and found me. He says, you know, I come here every single week, every single day almost. And he says, I had heard ambulances, but I didn't really know what was going on until my son came and got me. And my son said, Dad, you got to come with me. Mom's been shot. His wife was one that was at the church that was shot. And he says, I want to thank the guy that put a tourniquet on her leg to save her life. Nothing else really mattered in that moment when I was sitting with George. We had a good conversation and that conversation probably wouldn't have happened if we didn't have heightened awareness of the things that are going on in our community. And for me, it's not Republican or Democrat. It's not left and right. It's not Christian or non-Christian. It's we're a community and I prioritize the values of Carver County. And I hope that that plays through with some of the decisions that we're in and the things that we step into, not just to win the next election, but to make our community better. And it's clear every single day why I come here. There's a picture of my two girls right here. I want this to be a place that they can live in 20 years. I want them to be able to afford to live here and I want them to be in community. And so it's a heartfelt time for me and some of it takes processing. I'm glad people were here with civility, expressing their opinions. And there's answers for some of the questions that come. I talked to a gentleman that's been attached to the county for many years. And I think through relationships, we can get a lot of those questions answered. And sometimes there's going to be disagreement and hard decisions. So I wanted to share that. Had a chance to be on a call with Bob Levine last week. He was talking about great workplaces and employee engagement. And it was a meaningful conversation of what we can do for our employees to make them feel welcome. I know that we just approved a strategic plan that said people are our strength and I believe they are. And he shared some tips that we can do that as a enterprise. I wish the rest of the audience would have stuck around for a little bit longer to hear maybe some of the things that we had to say because there are some great things that are going on in Carver County. For years, residents and staff have been asking for better benefits. And so I was on a call with our leadership for insurance and they've worked really hard to lower the cost of insurance for our staff. Family plan last year versus this year is down on average about $4,000 a year. Those are big wins that are happening that sometimes get overlooked. I'll echo what Commissioner Fahy said about the CDA opening. I had a chance to be there too and see the building. The CDA team has had so much momentum in the last couple of years largely or partially due to some of the dollars that this board committed to have a historic half decade of the most amount of incremental units that we've added within the county. I had a chance to attend Chaska Cares this past week and I know others did as well or had a part in it. And the heart of Chaska Cares is how do we build a miracle field and fundraise for a miracle field for kids that have less advantage than maybe some people in this room. And it was a beautiful night of music and raffles and kids playing. And some people didn't even know what it was for, but we're hoping that that pushes it over the top so we can build a miracle field here in Carver County, yet another amenity for some of the people in our community. I think some of it was partially inspired by the inclusive field or the inclusive park that's in Waconia. We make a point to be out there three or four times a year. I do polar plunge in the sheriff's office in the back. We jump in cold water for no other reason than to raise money for the Special Olympics and maybe a photo op once in a while, but some of those dollars went to the beautiful park that's in Waconia and our family loves and uses that. If you didn't see it when you walked in, there's a door that hasn't yet been placed on the posts, but that's just a small thing that we've done here at the county to protect staff from challenges that may face us. We So I think it's just a small example of how administration and leadership has said if there's people there that shouldn't be up on the upper floor, um, how do we protect those folks? Because there's been some concerns in the past. So another point of action. Maybe on a more fun note, um, the Apple House is open. I know that Commissioner Workman likes the first kiss, and he normally, uh, posts that. We had a chance to try all their apples. That Apple House will be moving to the other side of Highway 5 in the next couple of years. So this year and next year will probably be the last time on the existing Apple House to get those apples.
One more year.
One more year. Um, the DMV, I know it's been an item that we've talked, uh, a considerable amount here. Uh, was out the door when I was there with somebody from outside the county. Uh, had a chance to go and experience that. The staff was fantastic. If you didn't know, there's an option where if you do a walk-in, they can text you. Um, and so this guy had to wait a couple hours, which is perfect. He had two hours worth of meetings. Um, but he got a text. They texted him when he was ready to go. He walked right in, got his license, and he says, "I think I'll be coming back to Chaska." Um, so interesting time. Um, it's not our responsibility to deliver the service to the DMV. That's the state, but we have taken that on historically. And then two more things. Um, the fall is a good time to get on a mountain bike. I know Commissioner Workman, myself, Commissioner Fahy, others have gotten on their mountain bikes. Monarch, there's no better place than Monarch. It sits within the city of, um, uh, Victoria. And I know we're going to be talking about Three Rivers Park District. They do a wonderful job of maintaining that and expanding it. So my six- and 10-year-old had never been on there. We were, uh, they were fighting, as all six- and 10-year-olds do, that they didn't want to go. They didn't want to go. They didn't want to go. They were on there for maybe a couple hundred yards, Beau, and, uh, they're like, "Dad, can we come back?" And, you know, it's always a win when your kids are asking to do that. And then finally, if you didn't know about it, another opportunity to build community. Every Saturday, uh, right by the courthouse, um, is something called the Park Run. Across the United States and the world, there's over 6,000 park runs in different cities. And we celebrated the fourth anniversary of the Park Run in Carver County in Chaska. There's four of them in Minnesota. This is the one that's the closest. And so if you're not doing anything, if you want to build community, if you want to have conversation, that's another opportunity to do so. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Okay, thank you. Um, it's been a while since we've been in person. Uh, I, I also attended, um, both the Chaska, um, Cares event last weekend. I want to thank the city of Chaska, the Chaska Rotary, Chaska Lions, and Ladybug Childcare, who sponsored that event. And the weekend before, we had a Latino Fest, which really celebrated the diversity that, um, exists here in Chaska and had a opportunity to participate in that as well. Last couple of weeks ago, uh, I attended my first-ever policy conference with the, uh, Association of Minnesota Counties, and, um, I sit on the HHS Committee. I, there's been a, uh, a shift, um, by the state and federal government to spend, to, to shift their costs into, um, our counties. And, um, so we spent, uh, a good amount of time really talking about beefing up our lobbying efforts, specifically with our state government, um, who has decided that, that property taxes is how they're going to balance their budget. And, um, that's going to be a real challenge for taxpayers if that happens. Um, so AMC, along with, uh, Commissioner Workman and, uh, Commissioner Urdeman, really ramped up our policy, uh, our lobbying efforts this year and staved off some of that cost. But we have work to do. We have, we have a lot of work to do in, in order to, um, push back against that. And so that I was able to participate in that and, and talk about, um, and vote on how we, we will continue that work. Saturday, I want to invite everyone. Saturday is our, um, the annual NAMI Walk, um, for mental health awareness, and, um, I am walking that, and I would encourage anyone who is interested in both, uh, personal wellness and, um, mental health awareness to, to join me on that walk. And you can get more information at namie.com. That's all I have.
Where, where is that?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, Minneapolis, I think.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I'll put it in my navigator and find out at the time. But namie.com is where you can find more information. It's terrible that I don't know where I'm going on Saturday.
Well, there is a, uh, Gopher Football Tailgate you could go to on Saturday morning.
You come, come and walk first.
11:00 AM.
And then you can go to that.
Game, and, uh, always good. I am always fully on board with our Golden Gopher Sports and Athletics. Uh, and I'm back on the wagon for the Vikings. Uh, a week earlier, I had that foot ready to go off the, off the wagon. I gotta stay off the wagon there, but uh, always fun. Uh, my Chan-Hassen Storm football team ranked number one, was defeated. Uh, Chaska won. Seems like everybody else won. I'm not sure about Waconia. Keep an eye on them too. Um, but I will let you know that the Chan-Hassen at Chaska football game is Friday, October 3rd. I'll probably be there. Might have to get there early. Um, and if you sit by me, I'll tell you all about my, my great career highlights at Chaska High School. I always hope for a 50-50 tie for that game. No defense, just fun, tie game. Everybody wins, just the way I like it. Uh, it was a, a good power trip out to DC with Commissioner Fahy and others. Uh, Public Works Director Rob Jent, and always good. This has not been a fun year for road construction, and not just here, but I know our Chaska friends and 41 and Engler, what a mess. I didn't, I grew up kinda close to there. I'm glad I don't live near there now. But my estimation is with our Arboretum transportation plan, uh, we're gonna be in worse shape up in my neck of the woods next year. So if you think you're having trouble maybe this year, although this is a happy week. Not only is it my birthday, uh, next Monday, Monday, uh, but a lot of the projects are going to be opening. I think Bavaria at, uh, 82nd Street is gonna be open, correct? And Engler 41 is gonna be open. Um, but next year, 41 and 5, among others. And so a lot of different, uh, projects that will be going on in preparation to close down Highway 5 in 2027, right? Lyndon? And to our poor friends in Victoria, beautiful Victoria, they have a geography problem there with lakes and beautiful Carver Park, Three Rivers Carver Park, um, that people think is ours, but we don't pay for, kinda? So, and, uh, uh, so when they close any single road, uh, near Victoria, uh, they have a big problem to go around up to 7, which is not a good road. Uh, my point being, we went out to lobby for some more money to keep this going. That Highway 5 project has just one more thing to do, and that's downtown Victoria. Anywhere from 17 to 20 million or, or so dollars, which used to sound like a lot of money. Uh, but that is where a big bad bottleneck will occur if we do not get that funding for that. The roundabout, there will be a new roundabout, uh, starting next year by the Dairy Queen. And nobody seems to know what's going on with the Dairy Queen. Let's get that Dairy Queen open. Uh, so a lot, a lot going on, but I, I did have friends, "Why, why don't you stop going out to DC, try to get more money so that we don't have to have all this road construction?" Well, we're almost done. For now. Um, I tried to remember who the author was, uh, to some of Commissioner Lynch's comments, uh, but, and I'll get it to you, but he, he said, "We are in the midst of the bollardization of America. So we have to have protective bollards around all of our buildings and big boulders and other things, so, uh, people can't drive through our buildings, uh, and terrorize us. And, uh, somehow or the other, over the past decades, that's where we've gotten. So that's all I'll say about that. Let's, uh, get on to the consent agenda.
Uh, move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Hey, got a motion by Lynch and a second by Anderson to approve our consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Commissioner Lynch?
Oh, not yet. We have the county administrative report.
Mr. Hemsey?
I know you've been waiting for this, Mr. Chair.
Wouldn't want to miss it.
Well, good news. No meeting next week. However, on Thursday, there is a grand opening, as you can see in here's three of your packet of the Chaska Yar. There's some history behind that. I'm sure Commissioner Urdeman can fill you in on that. Uh, which is the old Ernst House and a few additional houses. So you're welcome to attend that. That's why we put it on the agenda. But more than three or more of you can attend. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lynch, you got a motion?
Yes, I could, I'd make the motion to adjourn our regular session and move into a work session.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch has moved to adjourn our regular session, move into a work session, and Commissioner Fahy has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. By the way, when we're out in DC, boy, this Lyndon Rob Jent guy is a real popular guy. People like to hang around success, right?
Okay. People asking for autograph? Negative on that. Okay. Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Good to be here after a Vikings win. I am going to Dublin and England to watch two games in a row, so should be fun. But anyway, uh, we are here today to have a discussion about our Carver County parks, our wonderful parks and trails in the county. And, uh, interesting work, Colin. So again, this is, this is a work session just to talk about, you know, our potential service model for parks and trails. But to back up, obviously with our budget challenges for '26 and ongoing, it's pretty clear that, um, divisions need to look at mandated versus discretionary services. And parks, although being extremely popular, as you all know, is a discretionary service. So Public Works was tasked to look at efficiencies. What can we do with parks, not only in the short term, but maybe the long term? And discuss some options, uh, for our system. As you know, we're the highest-growth county in the state, so parks are a wonderful resource. Our, I know our, our, our staff does a tremendous job of looking after our parks and running our recreational programming. We're very proud of that. We know we have aging infrastructure that we've been working on in the last couple of years with our asset preservation plan. Working through that, trying to identify the conditions of our assets and figuring out a way to preserve, replace, and enhance them. And that's an ongoing process. High level, our, uh, operating and maintenance budget is 66% funded with county levy. So with, you know, the budget challenges and, and the future and the time is ripe, I think to look at our model and discuss potential options. So with that, we'll talk about currently, what we currently do at high level, kind of a revised model that the county's looking at. Um, we already did some minor adjustments for the '26 budget. And then look, uh, at a, you know, potential partnership model.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I just interrupt for a second?
Sure.
And, uh, one thing Lyndon didn't mention, we should recognize Marty Walsh, our former Parks Director.
Who's that?
Uh, I've been asked, "Is Marty still here?" Yeah, he's still here. There he is. In a part-time role, but it does open an opportunity as, as a key staff person director leaves that role. So one thing, uh, I wanted to recognize. So thanks, Marty, for your many years. He'll, he'll be around for a while to help us out in a part-time capacity.
Yeah, definitely. Marty's done a wonderful job for us, and he's here for questions as you guys have questions about the presentation, as is Sam, who's also in the audience. We also have two reps from Three Rivers Park District, which will, I'll introduce when we get to that slide. But thanks, Dave. Apologize for not recognizing Marty. That's a good point. So our current model, total budget is around 2.1 million. Uh, 66% is funded with levy. That's about 1.4 million. Uh, recreational programming, which I would say is absolutely fantastic and very popular and growing, uh, costs about 227,000, and only 52,000 of levy, just over 52,000 levy goes into that. The rest are fees from the rec programming themselves. So really, really nice, uh, operation there. CIPs, as you know, those vary per year, up and down depending on the projects. We rely on Met Council grants. We rely on bonding money from the legislature, or combined with Met Council bonds if the governor actually supports bonding for parks, which has been a struggle the last few years. Uh, AOF, that's the Acquisition Opportunity Fund. That's a, a fund that can be used to buy new land for parks. We've utilized that, as you know, several times. Not only at Lake Waconia Regional Park, but also for the, the former, uh, Union Pacific Railroad. Great opportunity to fund there. And then we have a new fund called the TAA Fund that will help us fund, uh, enhance our trail funding. So that's a great opportunity. 245,000 levy. This is as of 2025. A lot of that goes into matching these grants as well as, you know, trying to keep up with our preservation program in our CIP. Staffing currently, 12.3, so we're a small group staff. That's 14 people. And then, uh, 12.23 FTEs and STOC. That's a lot of hiring that happens every season. For '26, if you recall, with, uh, Dave's recommended budget, uh, we did reduce the levy in parks by 142,000. That combined with some re, reorganization, revenue increases, um, shuffling, uh, a few of our funding sources around. We got to that number. Our rec programings remained unchanged. Again, that's a growing area of our business, and revenue has grown in that area. CIP, you know, based on our, uh, asset management system, we asked the board for 100,000 more for '26 just to keep up with those assets, replacing the things that are very poor and working towards the poor ones as well. So that's, uh, that went up by, uh, at least in the recommended budget, 100,000 for '26. Our staffing, this is where we did a, a small reorg where we reduced 0.9 FTEs. Um, so as of '26, assuming the budget is approved, we'll be at the 11.4 FTEs or 13 staff. By looking ahead with the county model, there are other things we, we started looking at. Uh, one thing is to reduce our maintenance in the park, parks. Uh, do less mowing, have more natural systems. That will take upfront money though. In order to do that, I know Marty got a grant from LCCMR, right? Marty, 350 roughly thousand to do some natural resource work at Lake Minnewashta. Um, but over time, maybe we can get away from, um, do a little less grass mowing and have a more natural system. Uh, one thing we're looking at too is the trail maintenance. This is just options that are out there. Can our operations department help out with that, whether it's, uh, rat-filling, clearing trees, whatever it might be? Uh, that's, that's a way, that's another model that we could look at. And then CIP program management, this is projects come along, for instance, Paradise Commons, a federal trail project or state-funded trail project. We could have our program delivery engineers manage those instead of the, the folks in the Parks Department. So there's some efficiencies that we could probably consider for, for '27 and beyond. Questions so far? Okay. So the other model that we're looking at or discussing is, you know, outsourcing or partnership. And that's why we have Beau and Jonathan from Three Rivers Park here. Just to give you guys an, uh, an education on their partnership with Scott County. Uh, that's the, the one that I think is more relevant to us. They also have a contracting partnership or agreement that's newer with the city of Bloomington, but the Scott County model is the one they're gonna educate you guys on today. And then we'll open it up for questions and see where we want to go from here. Uh, just little bit of a comparison between the two counties. Um, on the screen here, you can see our park system and our trail system takeaway. As we have more regional trails in Scott County, they have more park acres. So obviously, we have the big Carver Park Reserve that's owned by Three Rivers. They manage that completely. The county has no responsibility in that. But we have 727 acres of regional park, those are the light, the green ones. Obviously, we have that Miller Lake search area that is in our plan for a future park perhaps. But again, our trail system, 41 miles and growing. And with our new TAA fund, we have an opportunity to enhance our trail system even more. Our user visits have been growing tremendously over the last few years, and we're up to 1.8 million. So if you compare that on the other side to Scott County, more acreage, of course. They have more park reserves, or they have, I'm sorry, about the same park reserves, more regional park acres, but their regional trail system is not quite as, as big as ours yet. And their user visits are lower. So just snapshot of how the two counties compare.
Lyndon, to that point too, and the trails, there's also the loose line, which doesn't show up, but that's a state trail, obviously. It doesn't show up, but it runs parallel basically to the quarter rail.
Hundred percent, state-run trail. Thanks, Commissioner. So, you know, just talking to Scott County staff and the Three Rivers people a little bit, this is how the county, the Scott County budget is today, about 3.7 million, 2.5 approximates levy. That funding goes to Three Rivers Park to manage the system. The rec programming's included in that number. I didn't have a separate number for that. CIP, just like us, it's up and down every year. But generally, they spend 250 to a million in levy per year, depending on the projects that are in play. More staff, bigger system, 25 FTEs, that's 29 people. And 13.6 seasonal FTEs. So that sets the stage a little bit. So now I'm going to hand it over to these guys, and they can run you through how the partnership works with Scott County.
Welcome, Beau.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here. My name is Beau Carlson. I'm the Superintendent of Three Rivers Park District. I've been with the Park District for about 23 years, 24 years. I've been superintendent the last 12. So very connected within the regional system and what we do organizationally moving forward. I do a lot of the legislative stuff, so a little bit more background on kind of the metro regional park system and what that actually is and how that works. And then with me today is Jonathan Blaming, and Jonathan is one of our associate superintendents, also 20-plus-year employee with the district. So we have a lot of background, a lot of history, and hopefully we can share a little bit about who we are, what we do at the Park District, and then specifically our relationship with Scott County. So just a little bit of background on the metro regional system, and I hope I'm not repeating this or this isn't redundant information, but I think it provides a little snapshot or background of the system and what grew out of the Metro Regional Parks Act of 1974. I think we have on there 1972, but it was actually 1974, that that bill was passed to create a metro regional park system. And this was intended by the state of Minnesota to have regional parks that would act as our state parks in the metro area. You think of state parks in the metro, we've got the loose line trails, the Commissioner mentioned. We've got William O'Brien, which is kind of on the border, maybe not even traditionally in the metro. When you think about it, it's far on the east side on the river. And then you got Fort Snelling. And besides that, Afton Park, I guess, is the other one, which is also very South Washington County. There aren't a lot of facilities to serve our metro residents. And when you have 2/3 of the population in Minnesota, that's a lot of folks that don't have park opportunities in their backyard. So the creation of the metro regional park system back in 1974 established 10 implementing agencies that would provide those regional park services. And the intent is that they are regional and statewide significant. So it has usership that's not within its pure political jurisdiction. It's outside of that area. Forty percent of your visitation is intended to come from an area outside of your jurisdiction. So you have the burden of users coming from other areas, but you don't necessarily have the tax base to support that usership. That support would come from the state of Minnesota or the Met Council. Now, historically, that's great in concept, but that's not happening. We're seeing about 10 cents on the dollar of what they're actually supposed to be providing for the system itself. So in hindsight, you look back and you had all these systems that were created and this idea of the regional system in 1974. But we had park agencies that were established far prior to that. You look at Minneapolis and St. Paul, they were established in the late 1800s. Three Rivers Park District was 1957. So we had all these systems that were in place, and really it was this idea of, instead of one park agency for the metro, or maybe two, an east system and a west system, they broke it in all these 10 other agencies. And for many, many years, and Commissioner Workman remembers this probably very well, we fought very hard, each individual agency, for our slice of the pie when we were trying to secure funding from the state of Minnesota, and it was a real battle. And I think over the course of the last 10 years or so, we've really come together as a group to say, you know, this does not make any sense. We shouldn't be fighting each other for money. We should be fighting to grow the pie. And with the passage of the Parks and Trails Legacy Fund, that's been a huge game changer from the standpoint of funding and funding happening on a regular basis and funding we can count on and plan for. And that's the biggest element when we go forward with capital improvements and even our operations and maintenance. If we know the money's coming, we can establish it within our budgets. We can plan for redevelopment. We can plan for new construction. When we rely on bonding, that's not a reliable funding source. And as Lyndon mentioned, the last few years in this administration, we've done very poorly, unfortunately, within the metro regional system of providing dollars. One of the other downfalls of this creation of the system is that it really doesn't benefit growing or emerging counties. You look at the established systems of Minneapolis, St. Paul, even Three Rivers. We already had a built-out system by 1974. We already had parks. We already had usership. We already had the population base. So when we were looking at the traditional dollars that were coming in at the time, it really feeds the rich, so to speak. It feeds those agencies that have the capacity and the ability to spend that money and use it. It doesn't benefit emerging communities or emerging counties. And you look at the collar counties around the metro, that has been the case. It's been very challenging for Scott County, Carver County, Anoka County, Washington County, certainly, to build their system because they just don't have the funding support that's coming from the state level. So we have the regional benefits there, all of which are based on formulas that are based on a couple of things: population, usership, and park budgets. That's the big key for all three or all of these formulas. Those are kind of the criteria to use. And you think about that for a minute. You're talking about 1,008 in visitation. Three Rivers Park District had 15 million visitors. You're talking about a couple million dollars in budget. Our budget just approved for 2026 is about $55 million. You talk about population and the challenges Carver County. Growing population, absolutely. You look at suburban Hennepin County, or you look at the city of Minneapolis, you're talking, you know, millions and millions of folks within those communities. So it doesn't benefit the smaller counties. So there has to be a different approach. And Scott County really recognized that way back in the, like, take a step back here before I get to Scott County. So I mentioned a little bit of this, but we were established as a special park district in 1957. We're the only special park district in the state of Minnesota. So what that means is we have our own taxing authority. We have our own bonding authority. We have an independent board, that five are elected, two are appointed by Hennepin County. And we actually are in suburban Hennepin County property tax breakdown. We're that category of other. And we actually have a direct assessment or a direct taxation of our property tax that supports our system as a whole. 27,000 acres, 16.5 million visits when you factor in our golf courses, Highland Hills ski areas also under the operation of the Park District, parks, park reserves, special recreation features, regional trails. We have 180 miles of regional trail. We do that independent of Hennepin County, which is our transportation agency. So it's a little bit different, a little bit unique. We're not under one umbrella. We're two separate umbrellas, but we deliver those regional trail services. Okay, so now the Scott County partnership. So as Lyndon mentioned, there are a couple of different models. The one we're really going to focus on is the shared powers or the JPA, Joint Powers Agreement that we have with Scott County. So this dates back over 30 years ago, and it was really the recognition at the time in the mid-1970s, we had Murphy-Hannerhand Regional, or, excuse me, Park Reserve that became available, and it was a recognition that was really a natural resources gem in the metro area. And we didn't want to lose, the county didn't want to lose that to development. They really wanted to preserve and protect that piece of land. They, at the time, came to us and said, we don't have the population base or the capacity to acquire, manage, and maintain this property. Could we enter into a joint powers agreement with you, the Park District, that you guys would actually buy that property, you would own it fee title, and then you would manage and operate it in perpetuity? And we did. And we had that joint powers relationship for both Murphy-Hannerhand, Cleary Lake Regional Park, and then Spring Lake Regional Park. So we had three parks within that system. As the years progressed, that was a wonderful acquisition master plan or a wonderful acquisition joint powers arrangement. It didn't do a great job addressing operations. And in about the mid-2000s or early 2000s, we were seeing growth within the Scott County system, and we recognized this JPA that was from the mid-1970s doesn't really reflect where we are today and the operations that we have going forward. So we took a step back. We said to both boards, we need a new model or a different model. And we negotiated and agreed upon a new JPA that really focused on the Park District providing all the park operations responsibilities for Scott County. It also focused on expanding and developing the relationships and developing the system as a whole. So looking at not only those existing parks, but adding new parks. We had Cedar Lake Farm that was coming on board. We had Doyle Kennefick Regional Park that was coming on board. We have Blakely Bluffs that's being guided and cited through a planning process to identify a park reserve that would go in the Blakely area. So when we look at this, and really this is related to what I'll call hard costs and soft costs. There is hard costs that are related to the actual system itself, and we have a separate standalone budget. So all those numbers I mentioned before, that was our general fund. We have a Scott County budget that we adopt and the county adopts, independent of our general fund budget. And that just focuses on the hard costs of operation and the hard costs of delivering park services within Scott County. With that, there are all the soft costs around it to support that system and stand up that system. And this is what we really brought to the table, and this is the efficiency that's really related to it. We don't go back, I don't go back and charge my time to Scott County to say, well, I spent two hours working in Scott County, that's going to be X amount of dollars going forward. We don't have our finance staff do that. We don't have our communications and marketing staff do that. We don't have our HR staff do that. By the same token, the county has their county engineers. They have the Sheriff's Department. They have the Soil and Water District. That also plays a role in contributing to the soft costs of the success of the system, but we don't charge for it directly. So that's the efficiency that we bring to the table. It's not two agencies that have to replicate all those services. We have our own services, but then we can come together to partner in delivering the hard cost of actually operating and maintaining those parks going forward. So like I said, we have a joint powers arrangement. It encompasses all the regional park operations in Scott County. It does exclude the landing, which you might be familiar with, sorry, which is in Shakopee. We operate that a little bit differently. We operate that more as a historical facility, that we do some programming there, but for the most part, it's preservation of those historic structures and building. And then we have our regional trail network. Now, their regional trail system, similar to Scott, or Carver County, is really tied into their transportation system, and they've really wanted to develop that. They don't have nearly the trail miles that Carver County has, but they are looking ultimately as that being an element of their transportation system and their transportation plan. We're the coordinating agency for operations and maintenance. We retain final decision-making authority for the Three Rivers-owned parks, so Murphy-Hannerhand and Cleary, which, like I said, we still own fee title. We own those properties. And then Scott County has final decision-making authority for Scott County-owned parks and trails, including planned parks and trails that are coming online. The JPA establishes a policy committee. We've got the chair and vice chair of both bodies. We meet quarterly roughly to talk about work plans, to talk about budgets, to talk about capital improvements, just general kind of checking opportunities. We report back to both boards then, so those members of that JPA policy committee provide feedback on where we're at, maybe in the budgeting process, what it's looking like going forward. And then we have an annual joint board meeting. We do that typically in the fall, where we bring together both bodies. We share where we're at in the budget process. We try to get an assessment of where the board's position is, how they're in support of that. And then we move forward on our end, adopting our budget, and then Scott County moves forward on their end, adopting their budget. And then we come together to work on those budgets moving forward. I should mention as well, the Park District provides a Scott County Parks Program Manager, who essentially is the liaison. They still do have a Parks Advisory Commission that is active and provides community feedback and input, and we absolutely want that as part of that relationship. We want to hear from the residents, those park advocates, what their priorities are, what their interests are. So the program manager works directly. She chairs their park advisory committee. They meet monthly. They get a lot of feedback. They do a lot of tours. They then bring that information, or the general manager brings that information back to both the county as well as the Park District to share what that feedback is. That individual serves on our leadership team at the Park District. She also serves a dual role in the county. So she's in two different places. She reports through the county system. She also reports through the Park District system. This is a little bit of a crude drawing, but it gives you kind of a sense of the flow of information and ultimately the input that we utilize going forward within the system. So you look at policy and prioritization, that's really the role of the electeds within both systems. That's also utilizing feedback from the SPCA, which is the Parks Advisory Commission in Scott County, and the general public as well. We then have our chair and vice chair group, and then we bring those recommendations to either board, dependent again on the property related to the decision-making. If it's an overall item, like maybe a marketing plan, it could go to both boards. And then ultimately, it goes to implementation through our operations team. Financially, as I said before, each agency has its own independent budget. So Scott County has their budget, the Park District has their budget. Scott County budgets for what their contribution is to support the Scott County fund. So within that overall kind of hard cost budget that we have for Scott County, we take park operations, we take out all the revenues, so the state revenues. We take out the golf revenue, which is a big driver in Scott County. We have Cleary Lake Golf Course that is a big contributor to that system. And whatever the differential is between all those revenues coming off the top and then the remainder, that's the contribution that Scott County makes to the Park District to support those operations. They budget for that, they approve that, that moves forward. There's no additional financial contribution from our end. There's no additional financial contribution from the county's end. We then administer that operating budget for operation of the parks in Scott County. We do constant financial updates as to where we're at, both from a revenue standpoint as well as an expenditure standpoint, so we understand what's going on. And in fact, over the last couple of years, we've actually developed a fund balance within that, which has been great to see. That gives us the opportunity, or Scott County, the opportunity to take that fund balance and invest it back into acquisitions that they're doing within the system. So as it relates to that Park Acquisition Opportunity Fund, we've not necessarily had to budget for that through a levy process. We've had enough fund balance that we can carry the match amount within Scott County that they can then look to maximize what those acquisitions are based on the requirements of the Met Council and the Acquisition Opportunity Fund going forward. And then each agency accounts for their resources and expenditures committed to the partnership. So we recognize, again, like I said, the soft costs, that there's a lot of contribution that goes into that, there's a lot of time and effort. But that's the soft cost that we put towards the efficiency of running the operation. And both sides do that and provide that. So it might be, again, all those pieces on the Hennepin side or the Three Rivers side, but also on the Scott County side, those same services come forward through their planning department, through their highway operations department, through, the Sheriff's Department is a huge contributor on their end. We don't do any public safety. The Park District does have our own law enforcement agency. We do our own public safety in suburban Hennepin County. Scott County chose to do that through the Sheriff's Department. That worked better for them. They already had that stood up and ready to go. It was something the sheriff wanted to take on. We support them through a park service officer that essentially is the one that's enforcing the ordinances. So Sheriff's Department doesn't want to necessarily be approaching people about dogs off leash or that kind of thing. So a PSO that we utilize within the park system is kind of the boots on the ground, eyes and ears of the park operations itself. And they communicate directly with the sheriff's office when they do have incidents or issues that might need a higher level of law enforcement or public safety support. All the employees in Scott County are Three Rivers employees, so they're all on our payroll. They're all in our union. They're negotiating through our union going forward. If their maintenance employees were non-union as it relates to park operations, but they do serve in our team, they're members of our group. Not only do they work within Scott County, but they have the opportunity to move within the organization, and we certainly have seen that. So in the maintenance ranks, for instance, they have opportunities for promotion, and it might be outside of those parks. But we have growth opportunities for the folks that are both in all the But we have growth opportunities for the folks that are both in all the operations or direct operations within the system. They might have the opportunity to transfer to a different park and be a manager someplace else within the system. That just means another opening, and we backfill those positions going forward. As I said, the program manager is a member of our leadership team. Our work plan and budget is developed and presented to both boards for adoption, and we have a 12-month notice of termination for the agreement. I just put that in, there's the opportunity, obviously, if we walk away or if anybody walks away, we're not able to immediately stand up those parks or budget for what the operation of those parks might be. In this instance, within Scott County, it's a recognition that if we do walk away, we'll still have the operation of Murphy Hanahan and Cleary Lake, because we do own those properties fee title, and they would have the separate operation in their system. And we would have to ramp up and kind of detangle the strings here of the relationship going forward. So the benefits, certainly efficiency and coordination. We can be more efficient on both the delivery of services, we can be more efficient on delivering projects, we can be more efficient on operations, we can be more efficient in the relationship with the Met Council. We provide support and direction. We do the same for Bloomington, where we're the agency at the table. When the implementing agencies are getting together, we provide that legislative support going forward, strengthening the voice of the partners and the regional and state level. We try to have that profile, that we have those relationships with electeds and the proper people that are providing those funding dollars going forward. We add expertise and capacity. We're a special park district. We only do one thing, it's natural resource-based parks and providing recreation opportunities. We don't have all the other demands of local units of government, but we do that one thing really well, and it's environmental education, it's outdoor recreation services, natural resources. We have our own natural resources department. So we have forestry, we have wildlife, we have water quality. All those folks provide their expertise and support of the Scott County system. And we've done a number of different projects, whether that's been funded through La Sartre and Sam's, or the LCCMR, or just initiatives that we've tried to do, like preventing oak wilt, or some of the other things that we've tried to do to prevent invasives within those parks. And then planning services, we do support them in planning. We've assisted in master plans that they have, both for developed parks in the form of Cleary, but also in Blakely Bluffs, this vision of a park reserve that's coming onboard in that area. We do park and trail design. We have architects, engineers on our staff. We're project managers for projects being delivered in Scott County. So we've had a number of different initiatives down there, whether it be camper cabins, shower buildings, lakefront services at Spring Lake Park. All of that have been supported by our staff or a member of their team, the project team to deliver those projects. All right. So that's a very quick snapshot and overview, again, of the relationship that we have with Scott County. It has been working well. That has been in place for now close to 15 years, and I think moving forward, when we see the growth of their system and the contribution that the county has made to the development of that Scott County park system, it's been phenomenal. And it's exciting for us to see, and has been exciting for us to see in the last couple of years, where we've made significant investment in the form of camper cabins at Cedar Lake Farm. We've seen a new shower building coming online that's at Cleary Park. We have a lakefront development, like I mentioned before, that's at Spring Lake, that has been a phenomenal asset to the public and is being well-used and well-loved. We have a very similar project with Carver County that we're really excited about, with camper cabins going in and out at Carver Park Reserve. I think another first step in adding to the amenity of Carver Park Reserve and what a gem it is and all the different services that are out there. Now, if we could just get that county road open, it would be great to have access or better access, improved access, as well as the trail systems out there connecting people into Victoria and places throughout both suburban Hennepin and Carver County. So with that, Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions you may have.
County Road 11. It's a good thing I have a Jeep to drive that. I was asked by Humanity Alliance to, and I guess that sign that is the Humanity Alliance sign is further down the road, it should maybe be more out by Highway 7. I don't know why they put it half a mile down the road or something, but I'm talking to our public, openly discussing things with our public work director.
The connection should be done at the end of the week.
The connection?
We'll talk about that later.
And so I've, I get to see Bo in action at our regional park meetings, which are usually every morning, and hang out with Marty. Good time to hang out with Marty down there in St. Paul. If you're going to be in St. Paul, might as well hang out with fun people. But we're not, as we know, we're not always going to have Marty around, we're not going to always have Bo around, and so I always, maybe it's a negative attitude, but what, you know, how do we get the hell out of this thing if we need to get out of it? Because Bo, replacement is some sort of a maniac, or something changes in the board or whatever else. And so I don't know that that's a question for you today, Mr. County Attorney, but that would be a concern of mine, because it's all about personalities and other things, and this is all really good, but, but, so that's, Mr. Metz.
Mr. Chairman, that could all be discussed and negotiated, certainly. I saw that it was a 12-month notice you have to provide, but we could discuss and negotiate some of our other provisions, at least initially, to make sure it was a good working relationship. So that's what I was thinking as well. What if this isn't working like we wanted? We don't want to be stuck in a, neither party wants to be stuck in a longer-term relationship.
Commissioner Lynch?
Along with that, that was kind of my question. Do you make investments? When you explained it, you own Murphy Hammerhand, and then so with the termination, they would go back, Scott would own yours, and you'd still have yours. Do you make investments in their park? New playground equipment, camper cabins in the Carver County parks? That was kind of my question. So then if it would separate, how does that, how does that work?
So Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lynch, I'm not sure how formal you guys do your work sessions, but so basically all the capital improvements.
Extremely formal.
All the capital improvements that we do within Carver County are done through the metro regional park system investments. So it's grants that are received through the Parks and Trails Legacy Fund, or through the Parks Bonding Program, or planned for through those different programs. Now, what changed a little bit is ARPA. So the American Recovery Plan, the money that came a couple of years ago, Scott County made the decision to invest all their ARPA funds into park assets and park infrastructure components. So they've invested some outside dollars, federal funds, into capital improvements and the agreement, and all of these going forward, you know, we have to have partnerships, right? The only way we're going to deliver these services long-term is not for independent units of government to ramp up and do all this stuff. We have to have relationships. So one of the first things that all the attorneys say right away is, well, what happens if this goes south? We got to have a way to get out of it. So we do develop agreements for almost all the elements of the system or the partnership we have with Scott County, but then also for all the other agencies that we partner with at the park district, and there's many of them. But even down to a pickup truck, if we buy a pickup truck out of the budget, we actually have an agreement that delineates kind of what happens if this goes south, who ends up taking the truck home at the end of the day, and who operates it, who maintains it, who keeps it in good condition. So we do negotiate all of that, because it is a concern of many electeds, and rightfully so, right? You want to protect those assets, you want to protect that investment and ensure that if you are going to make those investments going forward, that you can make them. Now, in the case of Scott County, I think the unique thing that we have not really gotten to and kind of the unsaid element of it is if we do unravel that relationship, are we really going to have two agencies operating in one county? So we've got Scott County operating a regional system and Hennepin County operating a regional system or Three Rivers. That's probably up for future negotiations, what that looks like, you know? Should we go back to Scott County and say, maybe we transfer those parks over to you guys for operation and ownership long-term? But we kind of have that in Carver County right now. We have two agencies operating in Carver County. We're operating Carver Park Reserve, and the county's operating its own park system, as was delineated through the earlier slides. So we're already kind of there. It's a matter of going forward, how do we kind of make that work?
I thought that was a great answer, because there's a question for you, is there's many needs within our park system. You're going to put camper cabins at Carver Park, it's absolutely wonderful, but that's really going to drive the need for all the ones that we want to build on Coney Island. Our park commission actually went and visited the ones in Scott County. I was super impressed, I think, thought those were phenomenal. And once they get a taste, our public gets a taste of those, they're going to want it. We have different needs, like playground equipment, and at Baylor Park, we have willing landowners willing to, same thing with Miller Lake, you know? So we have a park system to be expanded. At the end of the day, I don't know if John Q. Citizen really cares if it's run by Three River Parks or Carver County or whomever. They just like to go and enjoy the park. So I'm actually kind of excited to sit down and have this, I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Well, and quickly before we move on from that, so our, the Carver County taxpayers paying, continuing to pay for the employees used in our parks. So, so I always, so, and you mentioned, you know, our employees will be your employees, and you'll negotiate the union contracts. And so you get a board of Three Rivers Park Board, and they decide the employees need 25% raises. We're going to get that bill, correct?
Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. So yeah, I mean, that is the theory. That's how it works in Scott County. So those are our employees, they're covered under our union contract, our union agreement. I will say, we have a very conservative board that in the last 10 years, I think our total tax that we've raised is a little under 5%. So we have a very fiscally conservative board looking at these types of things.
I wish we did.
I'm sorry? Now, that's not to say that's in perpetuity, right? And that's always going to be the case. But that is one of the elements that is part of the challenge, is recognizing what that investment's going to be and recognizing, again, from the standpoint of the county's perspective, what they're capable of covering. So in the relationship with Scott County, we do go forward, we put a budget together very early in the spring, we have the idea of needs, and when we're talking about some of these assets that we've added from a capital standpoint, they're no good unless you add operations dollars and you add staff to support them. If you don't have the ability to take care of what you have, you're not going to be able to deliver those services going forward. So we have very early conversations with the county, and it's the opportunity for the county board to say, this isn't going to work for us, this is too high. So at that point, we have to redirect. And in some cases, we've cut staff, we've cut positions, or we've looked at rearranging or efficiencies that we can provide in delivery of that services with maybe lower-level staff or seasonals or those kinds of things. But that is one of the elements that goes into the system. Now, I don't think that that hasn't been a problem in Scott County going forward. That's not to say, again, that that couldn't be an issue, but I think the opportunity from a staffing standpoint, and what they could do as far as growth and opportunities within our system as a whole, is also a benefit for them as individual employees.
That's a good answer. Commissioner Page?
Mr. Chair, Bo or Lyndon, can we go back to the map that shows Carver County and Scott County, the different trails and parks? Because Bo, you had talked about the communication part with the marketing and the services, and I'm not familiar with the signage, for example, at Cleary Park. Does that say this is a Three Rivers Park in Scott County?
Yeah, how does that work?
So good question. So all of our marketing is in cooperation, so it's Three Rivers Park in cooperation with Scott County. We actually have separate branded materials that we utilize in Scott County that highlights the partnership and talks about the partnership. In fact, you'll probably see, I always seem to have branded materials on myself, but often for the Scott County, it's Three Rivers Park in partnership with Scott County, right on the logo. And we do that in the signage, we do that in brochures. One of the elements, and I'll just, to speak to that, because you do mention it, the benefit of the marketing and the reservation groups and all that kind of thing. So when they call into our marketing number and they want to book a campsite, or they want to book a picnic shelter, and the one that they're interested in might not be available that particular weekend, or already be booked that particular weekend, we can direct them to another facility someplace else within the system. So from a delivery and a customer service standpoint, there's a real benefit in that, that we have so many more resources and availabilities that they might have right now. So in the case, again, for Scott County, or for, excuse me, Carver County, you're calling and you want to reserve the picnic shelter at Minnewashda. Well, maybe that doesn't work, but maybe we've got shelters at Carver that are available, or maybe even Lake Minnetaka that might be available. That's still in that area, close proximity, but maybe we can direct them in a different direction. All of that's under our marketing communications staff, that they take care of that, as well as promotion of events and activity.
Thank you. And then in relationship to the trails, for example, you have the Spring Lake Regional In our scenario, for example, the trails at Baylor Park, would you manage those trails within the park? And then also, would you manage the Dakota Rail Regional Trail? Because that technically is not in a park.
Great question. So a couple of different elements of that, and one of the really interesting things, I think, within the Carver County trail system in particular, is at least a couple of those trails, we did use to manage for a long period of time. In the case of Dakota Rail, that's an extension or an additional segment of the Dakota Rail as it extends into Hennepin County and goes 13 miles from St. Bonnie into downtown Wayzata. So there would be a natural transition for us to take on those, but again, recognizing what Lyndon mentioned, and I think this new transit tax that's out there, that's available, is going to be a little bit different situation for trails going forward, and we can certainly have those conversations going forward, what that would look like. As it would relate to a Baylor Park or any of the parks within the system, if there's trails inside the park, yeah, we would manage all of that. That would be part of our, our program.
Okay. And then you had mentioned with the PSO handling most of the problems within the parks. Can you give us any examples of how a PSO would have escalated a situation up to call a county deputy or the county sheriff?
Great question. So in Scott County, we actually have a lead PSO who is a little bit higher level service. They actually have access to the LETG system, so they can get online, they can contact the sheriffs directly. They have a radio directly as well, so they have a quick line to a sheriff's deputy that they can call on their channel to connect with them if there is an instance that's been escalated or needs to be escalated to that next level. And then we have two lower-level PSOs. They don't have ticketing authority, they're not out there, they don't have the ability to be out there writing tickets. That lead PSO does have that ability, so they can write citations on ordinance violations, so small level. And it could be anything from being at the off-leash area and you don't have a pass. And our approach, and our approach to law enforcement in general, is really from a customer service standpoint, we want to inform and educate. We're not out there writing tickets for the sake of writing tickets. So it's to tell people, by the way, you need to have a pass out here. If you go to the visitor center, they're happy to sell you one. If it does become a reoccurring situation, then it could be a warning ticket, and then ultimately a citation from a sheriff's deputy. It could be anything from an off-leash violation to an off-trail violation. One of our ordinances is that in the park reserves, at least in particular, you need to stay on a designated trail. So somebody might be off-trail. We get a lot of dumping that happens, I think, in all parks, maybe statewide, if not nationwide. People dump their trash. We try to track that down, figure out where it's coming from. So the violations are all relatively low-level, and you look at our system as a whole, that's pretty consistent with what we see, is really minor violations, minor conflicts, trying to talk through those situations with the customer and figure out kind of what's going on, educate, inform them of what needs to be done going forward, and then hopefully we see compliance.
Thank you. One final question, Bo, just that, what does Carver County have that Three Rivers would like to manage?
That's a great question. You know, again, we're in the regional park business. That's what we do. We don't do local parks, we don't do basketball courts, we don't do ball diamonds, we don't do any of that. That's one of the challenges I think Bloomington found within their system. They were split between the two. They had a local park system, and they had a regional park system. And they were challenged to do both well, and they really recognized, hey, Three Rivers, you guys are doing this work, you're good at doing this work, why don't we let you take the regional system and we'll focus on the local system? Carver County's got a great regional system. I think we could manage your system, I think we would have the capacity and ability to manage your system, and I think we could do it well. And they complement each other very well. I mean, we've existed for as long as Carver Park's been around and serving not only Carver County, but Hennepin County and Hennepin County very well. And I look at Woodland Cove and the growth that's going on on the north side of Highway 7, and the system that we have and the trails that connect into Carver, into Victoria, into the Carver County Trail, they're interchangeable. They really complement each other well, and I think there's opportunities. And it might be something along the lines of developing camper cabins, that the demand for camper cabins right now is at a peak. And if we look at a cabin or two at Carver, hopefully maybe five or even more down the road, but they do take a while to develop. And if we do get down the road, but they do take a while to develop. And if we do get to the point where we're at capacity there, we can direct people to the next system, which might be at Waconia, or it might be someplace else within Carver County. I think that complements each other very well. So there are elements of this that I think make a ton of sense going forward. I look at Minnewashta Park. I live off of Highway 7 myself in the Minnetaka area. I got a lot of friends that live on that corner of Minnetaka that use Minnewashta every day. They love that off-leash area. They just assume it's the Three Rivers Park. Or a lot of times they say, yeah, your park over there at Minnewashta. And I think to the commissioner's point, the public doesn't recognize that. They don't know the difference between the two. They want clean, they want safe, they want good facilities. And that's kind of the bottom line, from my perspective at least.
Commissioner Urdeman?
Thanks for being here. I think it's, you know, the five years I've been on here, it's been a good relationship. We've had a chance to go to your annual celebration that Gibbs has led the charge with and heard all the different things that you've been doing. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't elevate the efforts. And Marty, I've always said that we operate our parks on duct tape and twine and none more clearer than, and you've stretched the dollar and delivered great things. We deliver a cost per visit about a third of what Scott County does in less than what Three Rivers does. So we're at 78 cents, if the math is right, per visit. Pay a buck to go jump on the trails, pay a buck to go to our lakes. I mean, that's, it's the best healthcare program, I think you've said in all the park meetings we've had, that's out there. Scott County at $2.27 and Three Rivers at $3.70 based on 11 divided by visitors. And so, you know, we move from kind of doing the best with what we've got, and let's wait for some money to fall from the sky, to being intentional about what does the future of the park look like. And that comes at a cost, for sure, no doubt about it. And I don't say it as a cost, as a cost per se, but as an investment, because this has elements that we've all been talking about. Perhaps the best mental health program we have in the county is our parks. Perhaps our best way to attract and retain talent is our parks. Perhaps our best economic tool is our parks, right? So there's a lot of pieces to that equation. I think that revenue is a big piece of this. And I think the creativity that you've had in Three Rivers Park District to generate revenues, either cover your costs and deliver amenities, or deliver surplus to subsidize other areas are important pieces, especially as we talk about budget. Can you talk about some of the facilities? I've been to all of them, but if you could talk to some of the facilities that might be delivering a user experience that's fee-based, that we may be considering or could consider as part of Carver County in the future? I'm thinking about Elm Creek, and I'm thinking about camper cabins, and I'm thinking about some other band events.
Commissioner Urdeman, thank you. Yeah, and great point. And I think the interesting element of the cost per visit or per visitor is an interesting discussion. And you look at that, and you raise a very good point related to Carver County's cost per visit and maybe Scott County or Three Rivers. And when you look at those direct costs, and that's the key to it, you look at the direct cost of what that service is, but then you have to look at the indirect costs. And one of the elements that I'm very proud of, we're very proud of at the park district, is that we have no deferred maintenance. We've kept up within our asset management system to keep up with all the maintenance that's required. And one of the real beliefs that we have as an organization is take care of what you have. You got to take care of what you have first before you build new. And all of that is investment back into that system. So one of the key components and maybe driving those costs a little bit higher, is that we invest a lot into maintaining our system and our asset preservation. So there's a chunk of that money that might not directly go to mowing that trail that that trail users on. It might go into the seal coating or the crack sealing that goes into that trail long-term, or the redevelopment of that trail long-term. Trails are a great example. There was a huge boom in trails. I remember when I started, one of the first things I did was as the trail coordinator in the park district, trails were a newer thing. We were still having battles with communities that didn't want to see trails in their backyard. Now we get demand all the time about communities saying, we want more trails, more trails, please. They're hugely popular. They're also a huge investment. You got to take care of them. You got to take care of the pavement long-term, and that's the seal coating, crack sealing, redevelopment long-term. So we make investments on that side. From the standpoint of funding and revenue that go back into the system, there are some unique things that we've done as an organization and recognize. We've got a tubing hill up at Elm Creek that's tremendously popular. If you split that tubing hill off from our total general fund operation, it covers its cost. Now, where we factor in another element to it is we also do cross-country ski trails at Elm Creek with man-made snow. So the snowmaking and the cost delivery of those services are a little bit more expensive. And when you factor that in, it doesn't quite cover the cost, but it comes really close. And it actually reduces that expenditure that's necessary to support that system. We also use that building or that chalet as a banquet center, a banquet facility, and recognizing that you've got this great winter recreation area. And even with man-made snow, we typically can get open first part of December and will be open till nowadays, it's been first part of April. We've had kind of extended winters or our seasons have changed. We're no longer early Thanksgiving to kind of end of February. We're now pushing into March. But we recognize that if we have a building that has the capacities to support that winter operation in the winter months, it's got to be sized accordingly. We don't want that building to just sit empty for the remaining six months of the year. So we use it as a banquet facility. We use it as a rental facility, and it sees a lot of traffic that way. We abandoned our fee entry system back in 2003, where we were charging a pass. You entered the park, you had to pay five bucks or seven bucks, or you had to buy an annual pass. We had a commissioner at that time that said, you know what, everybody's paying in the form of their property taxes. Why are we charging them twice? And it was the recognition that for basic park services, you have free access to the parks, you can use the parks. If you want to go fishing, you want to picnic, you want to go for a walk on the trail, that's all free. If you have value-added services, so services that we have additional staff time or resources that are required to go into that, you're going to pay a fee for that. And that could be launching your boat, that could be an off-leash area, that could be cross-country skiing where we do have man-made snow, we have lights, we have the facilities to groom those trails and all that. So we do charge a recreation pass for those various activities. Back when we still had our park entrance fee, we were looking at about four or five million visits per year. And we thought, boy, if we could ever get to six million, that would be huge. Like I said before, we're at 15 million right now. We generated at its peak about a million dollars for our pass sales. And that was dailies and annuals. We're at about nine million right now in revenue through our pass system alone. And then in addition to that, you look at the fee-based services we charge for our banquet facilities, and we have what we call the Big Four, which are marquee facilities that we utilize for wedding rentals, event rentals, those types of things. And then we have additional space rental. That might be picnic pavilions, shelters, campgrounds, camp spaces, camper cabins have been hugely popular, to see the girls both at Baker Park Reserve as well as Cedar Lake Farm now coming online. So we're always looking at that new revenue stream, what that new revenue opportunity is out there. And we have been successful in a variety of different ways. And the key, I think, from our standpoint, is really looking at it from a year-round standpoint. It can't just be revenue in the summer. It can't just be at that golf course. It's got to be at other facilities around. And we've tried to tap into that as best we can, because as we all know, we're a 12-month recreation-demanding public. And there are facilities that can be provided to provide those services, but then also generate some revenue as well.
I think it's great that you guys are sizable enough to be able to deploy capital and talent to try new things, too. And I want you to talk a little bit about what you've done with bands. But you've been quoted as saying, and I've stolen your quote, is we've loved our parks to death. And we have throughout COVID and high traffic through our parks. We've seen it. Our teams responded to it. We've addressed those things. One of the questions that came up a couple of years ago is can we have a separate line item on our taxes that shows what people are investing in parks? Because we park, we invest, was it $2 per 100 in parks, which is paltry. It's about a half of what we invest in our libraries. But the parks are more beloved, more used, et cetera. Is there a path with Scott County or others to carve out a line item on our taxes that says, this is what you're contributing to parks? Is that a revenue stream that people could say, yes, I do or don't, referendum-wise or otherwise? Because right now, it just comes in through our levy. And I don't think people appreciate it as much. If they knew that we paid $2 per 100 on our parks, they'd be like, what are you talking about? We should pay more than that. It's worth way more than that to us. And people in other areas have said, our parks are worth that when they get a chance to vote on it with referendums and whatnot. Is there a path for referendum or line item tax items, if we were to partner, to free up dollars that doesn't necessarily come out of a general levy, but comes out of the dedicated park levy?
Commissioner Urdeman, that's a good question. And certainly, I would have to do a little bit more digging through the statutes to kind of figure out what that would look like and how that would be managed. Certainly within our system, you know, we are another line item in your property tax statement. And when you look at your overall tax burden, if you will, for property tax owners in suburban Hennepin County, you look at that, the average valued home in suburban Hennepin, I think this year is $417,000, somewhere along those lines. Those homes pay about $100 to us per year. So when we're looking at our fee increases, or we're looking at maybe our preliminary levy and what that increased dollar amount might be, it's $2 per year going up when we're looking at a 4.5% increase on our taxes. So they directly can see that. Now, when you think about about $100 and the overall burden for a property tax system within suburban Hennepin, and you have school districts, you have cities, you have the county, you have the state, there's a lot more that is going to those different systems. Now, I don't know how you would break that down, and maybe you could through a referendum process to pay off what that might be ultimately. And there's been a lot of successful local and county referendums out there and throughout the state that I have to dig in a little bit more to see how they would go about
Two more things, and then I'll stop. But you talked about golf courses in your holding. And I know that there's one, if not two, golf courses within Carver County. We're in backup. We have the second most amount of holes of golf per capita per square mile here than anywhere else in the state except for Ramsey. Part of that's our size, but part of it's our holdings, right? Hazelteen draws, the town course draws, et cetera. But there's others that are like, are we going to be a golf course or are we not? Is that part of, would you guys have interest in a potential acquisition or building a new one? Or how did that come to evolve? Was it part of the system already that you guys just took over? It seems to be a net positive for most courses that do it well.
Commissioner Urdeman, certainly that's an element of the services that we provide. We have six golf courses now total in a variety of different forms. We have the championship course at Baker National. We have a number of nine-hole executive courses, if you will. We have the driving range at Parker's Lake, most of which are partnerships. We have partnerships with the county at both Glen Lake Golf Course as well as Parker's Lake Driving Range. And then we have a couple standalone. And you've seen the tremendous growth of golf since COVID. And those numbers seem to be staying strong and will continue to rise, I think. But there is going to be a breaking point where we have land valuation rising tremendously fast. And you have some of these mom-and-pop courses that they're having a hard time making it, or they're having a hard time kind of consistently delivering the service. And they're looking at, boy, I could sell it to this developer and make a lot of money, and now I could retire. Would we be interested in expanding our services? It would depend on the circumstance. It would depend on the conditions. The benefit that I think we bring to the golf operations within our system is the scalability. We have both golf superintendents that manage multiple courses. We have golf managers that manage multiple courses. We have instructors that instruct at a variety of different courses. So the more we grow in that side of things, and the more we grow and have those opportunities, because of the scalability that we have, we can deliver efficient services. And all of our courses are running in the black, and in some cases significantly in the black. They not only, within our system, we call those enterprise operations, that includes our ski hill, that not only do they cover the cost of operation, they cover their capital costs, too. So in the case of the golf course, we just completed an irrigation project, $2 million irrigation replacement project that was covered 100% out of proceeds raised by the golf course itself. The chalet, and just to mention one more example, sorry, I can't help myself, but the chalet project, and we rebuilt Highland Chalet a number of years ago, and that was a $15 million investment, all of which was made by proceeds that we saved for many years to rebuild that chalet. Again, the recognition that that's a thriving ski business. We're probably at capacity. That hill's not getting any bigger, and it's not very big to begin with. So we probably can't expand our winter revenue, but we really wanted to expand our summer revenue, recognizing we're putting $15 million into this building, and it's going to sit empty for six months out of the year. We had an initial goal of a $250,000 revenue amount that we asked that hill to generate over the summer months. And at first, that was a little bit of a challenge. And then we really challenged the staff to come up with unique ways that we can do it. We hit this last year about $450,000 in revenue. And one of the things that they've done, and one of the things they've been successful at, is not only looking at the banquet revenue, because we all know we're limited. You have a limited season in which you're going to have weddings. People aren't getting married on Tuesday nights. That just doesn't happen. But we do have happy hours on Tuesday night. We do have concerts in the park on Wednesday nights. We had two concerts, one in August, one in September, where we had pretty big-name bands, local bands, not anybody nationally, but local bands that tour around. We made $25,000 and $20,000 in concessions alone in two nights. We run the concession operation. The band is free. The music is free. People just show up. The amount of revenue we develop or we collect via concessions is all right there. So there are different streams that we've been able to identify, and they've been very successful.
Last thing for you is I've cast vision to see if we could have 5 million visits by 2050. We're on pace to do so. 1.8 million visits last year. I don't know what the counts are recently. And to generate $5 million a year in revenue out of our parks. I think those are doable. And I think you guys have the vision to do that and pull it off and the staff and all that other stuff. You talked about the band events. You talked about Sledding Hill. We casually refer to the Sledding Hill in Waconia as Tom Workman's Sledding Hill, because he saved us $1 million by dumping dirt there, right, from the road project. But those are some areas where I think we can get there. And I'm supportive of taking the next step. I know there's a lot of devil in the details. And how do you work through contracts? And what does it all look like? But, and it's an arbitrary number. But I would like to think of a future that maybe in five or 10 years, if we did come to partnership, that maybe 70 or 30% of our revenues came from generated surplus within our parks that are optional. You don't have to force anybody to buy a beer or a soda or a hot dog at these events. But you're pressing the envelope to say, hey, wait a minute. We look at the future of the parks. We're getting a lot of stuff dumped on us at the state and federal level. How do we, how do we continue to deliver great parks? I think we have to be smart about delivering surplus with surplus generating activities. And I don't think anybody in the metro does it better than you guys. I also think that in partnership with Carver County, we tend to forget that you guys have largely delivered Cover Park Reserve at no cost to our taxpayers. We'll start generating some revenue out of those things. And there's some grants and partnerships and all that other stuff. But it's a huge holding, and we thank you for doing that. What does it look like for us to take the system to the next level? And I think that, I think that there's costs associated, but I think you guys bring it. And then the last thing is, is if staff's listening, you said it, and I guess it missed it before, but the opportunities within Three Rivers with, I don't know how many employees you guys have?
350.
300 versus 11, 12, 13 that we have here, that was lost on me over the last couple of years. That's a huge opportunity, I think, for some of our staff to see professionally how, on a career basis, that maybe we haven't necessarily had so much. We can retain talent and do stuff like that. So I'm in support of this. I think we should be intentional about generating revenues to pay for some of this stuff. So, thanks.
Commissioner Anderson?
All right. Thanks. Welcome. A couple of questions. I just first want to loop back around on the PSO. I'm a big biker. So there's the, how are you handling e-bikes on your trails? That is the question in my biker community.
It's the number one thing I've heard in the last couple of years. And it continues to grow, unfortunately, in the wrong direction.
Yep.
You know, when e-bikes first came around, you'd see them once in a while, and you could identify them easily. And you would know which one's an e-bike and which one's not. I ride a lot myself. I'm right off the Lake Minnetaka LRT Trail. I bet it's at least 50%, if not 75% of the bikes on trails on a regular basis are e-bikes. What's happened, unfortunately, is the industry has far surpassed what the intention legislation ever meant for as it related to e-bikes. And it's like everything, right? The market is far exceeding what government can do to define what these things are. And now you see them on the market, and there's these kids riding these Super 73s that they look like motorcycles. They ride like motorcycles.
If it doesn't have pedals, it is a motorcycle.
It, that's exactly right. And now it's even expanded further to e-motos, which is the number one thing I hear complaints about, which are pegged motorcycles. They're electric motorcycles. They're off-highway vehicles. They are not to be on trails.
That's right.
We've tried very hard. The challenge is, most of the people that are riding those are 13, 14, 15 years old. Some cases, they shouldn't even be riding. You have to be 15 to even be on one. They're not insured. You can't get them insured because you don't have a license for them. So they're dangerous. And if you do have an accident, often you're not covered under your homeowners if they hit somebody or if they hurt themselves. So they need to be, we need to be educating. We also need to do something at a state level. And we have a group in Hennepin County of both mayors and sheriffs that we've been working on legislation and working with our delegation to talk about legislative changes. In fact, we have a meeting coming up October 1st to talk about what our legislative strategy is going to be going forward, because it has to be addressed. And it's the e-motos. E-bikes, there's a lot of people complying with the e-bike laws and complying with what e-bikes were intended to be. The e-motos are not. They're outside of the market. They're outside of what the definition of e-bikes are, and they're illegal.
Well, thank you for that. I had a conversation with both Police Chief Seifert and Chaska and our sheriff. And both would be in support of legislation. And so I'll give you my card, and we'll chat about that, because it is, it is dangerous. So thank you for that. Looping back around, I'm a huge fan of outsourcing. I think that provides us the economies of scales that we need. Obviously, I think this is a big win for the taxpayers of Carver County, not necessarily that will save taxpayer money, but it will allow us to save some of the soft costs that we have in some of our operations. The concern I have, and Commissioner Urdeman mentioned, I do think that this is a win for our employees. It gives them more opportunities. However, our employees in the park system are going to be the most impacted. However, our employees in the park system are are going to be the most impacted by that. So I'm glad that our employee relations staff is here, thank you for that. And so I guess that's my question is, what is, what is our transition, what's our next step in the process? Um, if we move forward, what's our transition plan for our employees? How are you going to take care of our people?
Commissioner Anderson, great question. So this is a little bit unique. When we did Scott County, uh in our relationship with Scott County, most of those folks were already Sky, or Park District employees. It was just the recognition that they were going to officially kind of be under the Park District umbrella uh and covered with that. You know, one of the things we've talked about a little bit just in preliminary conversations, I mean, we're in almost October. This is not a 26 plan. We're not going to be able, if we were to sit down and talk about the details of this, there's no way we could deliver this in in 26. It's going to take a long time and if that means sitting down with employees, talking about what that transition is, talking about what the details are related to what we offer as an organization compared to what Carver County offers, how we would look at that transition, those are steps we would want to take and we'd have to navigate that and kind of figure out what that's going to be. I think to begin with, we really need to work through, we haven't had any discussion on the details and the framework of what this would even look like. Uh, if we got to that point that we felt comfortable, I think that would certainly be the next natural step to start to have those conversations about, how would this transition look for employees to make sure it's as seamless as as possible? And the hope would be for everybody, it would be nothing more than, well, I'm working now for Three Rivers instead of Carver County. And we have all the, you know, parapension that we contribute, we have the same leave program, we have the same uh benefit programs or very similar benefit programs. So hopefully that transition, if we get to that point, I caveat that, would be as smooth as we could possibly make it.
A- a- and and the reality is for our employees, this, this is a, already is a subject of conversation. And um so I think we need to be intentional about what our next steps are. We need to um radically communicate with with those individuals about where we're at. Um, you know, this is the business I'm in and change management and transition management is a huge piece of that. We have, thank you Marty for your leadership, Sam is in the room. Um, we have good people and we want them taken care of. And um so I understand that this is a long process, that that puts our people in um that long process as well. Um, again, thank you for ER staff for being here. I know you're really good at making sure we take care of our people, but um there's a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot. And uh let's make sure that our people are, understand what the process is and and where we're at going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, so as is tradition, I didn't hear anybody speak too negatively. Are we uh, are we gonna ask staff to proceed with this concept? Anderson nods yes, Utterman's a yes. Fahy and Lynch are a yes. I'm gonna say no, forget it. Wherever they're going, I'm not, no. No, I think uh, I think it's good, I think you helped uh allay some fears and and on my, I'll speak for myself, maybe ignorances and other things, so sounds good. Let's uh, let's see how this will work, Bo. Thanks for your, for your morning, we appreciate it.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, there is obviously a lot of work to do before we come back and talk again, but you know, you get what you pay for, so just realize that. Takeaways I got on this were, the trails is a, an area we gotta figure out how that works, right? Because it's probably a little different than Scott County. Obviously, the staffing is hugely important. How these guys do rec programming compared to how we do ours, which I think we did an awesome job to work through that. Even the as asset preservation, you know, we're at the beginning phases, you remember, of budgeting for that? If they're already totally mature, that performance level is going to be different. So for us to get to where they are, that's going to be dollars. So we just got to work through all those details and figure out what the numbers say and then we'll, we'll come back and give you an update if that works.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your time.
And and Lyndon, can you provide kind of what that timeline might look like? I, not right now, not right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it, but in the fu, I don't need that right now, but it, but in the future.
Well, is the goal January 1, 27, is that, is that a goal?
Could it be done earlier? I I don't know.
You mean like this total package finished, JPA signed? I don't know, is that reasonable?
15 months?
Could be, yeah. But you'll have to make some serious decisions before then, for sure.
Yes.
Just keep Gibbs out of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
We're gonna talk about highways near your house, uh, Bo, if you wanna.
Can we take a break?
Yeah, you better take a break.
Yes, I do, sorry, sorry.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. We wanted to give you an update. It's actually been a few months overdue on the Arboretum area improvements, so we'll try to keep it as quick as we can. Not, not that easy considering the magnitude of our undertaking here. So, um, as you know, this is the, this is the Arboretum Area Master Plan, so to speak. Uh, the projects shown on here are in various stages of development. We'll go through that. As you know, Eighty Second Street is under construction as we speak. Uh, that's the orange piece. Uh, they actually poured the deck on the bridge yesterday, or they started. I got a cool photo of that. On the west side by Dairy Queen, that project is also underway. Um, as we speak, there's a few issues with that one that we need to discuss. And then the green one, well Crimson Bay, is that under construction? Yep, that's the part that Chan is leading, and then the big boy, the big one is the green that will discuss where we're at. But before we do that, I just wanted to kind of give you an update. This is kind of all the area projects, area project update in the next five years. Um, I just wanted to point out a few updates for you while I got you here. Forty-one and ten, our big project that you mentioned, Comis-, I mean, Mr. Chair. That one, we are hoping that Big Roundabout, if you've driven there, it's big, the, the concrete roundabout, big beautiful roundabout.
Which one?
Should I have said that?
Forty-one and Angler?
Forty-one and Angler.
You might want to mention Big Beautiful Turbo.
Turbo.
Turbo Roundabout.
But, um, our contractor is hoping that that opens nine twenty-nine, September twenty-ninth.
My birthday.
So let's hope for the best there. Uh, they also want to finish the other roundabout by the community center. Oh, there we go. There we go. They want to get this one done this year, too.
Yeah, that's what happened.
So they're working really hard, but hopefully the, the opening of the highway will be the end of this month, unless we get some radical weather. So that's good news. Um, Carver Park Reserve, Commissioner Workman, you talked about that project being painful. That continues to be closed. Access is from the north.
I think you pointed to, uh, Rolling Acres there, but, uh...
This one here, this guy. Access is from the north still. Most of the grading work is complete. Yeti, yeti, yeti. Should have the one, should have the one lane path back to full roadway from the church to Humanity Alliance by the end of the week. Turban gutter next week and paving October sixth. Darren, bless his heart, he's on, he's on lead for a few weeks. He's been working not only as the lead in design, he's also been the construction engineer for the last six months. So he's, his plate has been enormous. So he's, he gave me a few notes here just to give you an update. Bavaria Road and, um, eighteen, Eighty-Second, again, uh, that one, where are we here? This guy right here. That guy will be open too on nine twenty-nine. So that's good news. There's still be some work remaining, but the roundabout should be up and running.
Awesome. What about the rest of Eighty-Second Street there?
The rest of the Eighty-Second Street will be, um, east side. The bridge will be later in October, but we're hoping the whole thing will be done by mid-November. Okay? I don't think it's on the map. Waconia Parkway North in Waconia, as you know, that roundabout's open. This is the year of roundabouts, as you might have noticed.
It wa-, it is. It's an understatement.
Yeah, we've done like eight, eight, I think this year, maybe nine, if we get them all done, if we get that community center one done. Two twelve's going well. Just a quick update on that. We have to keep that surcharge on the, by bond guards for a little longer. It's moving more than we thought, so, but the overall schedule is still on track. Galpin, the city project, I'm not exactly sure where that is, but I think it's gonna be, it is gonna be done this year.
Thanksgiving, I'm hearing.
You heard that? Okay.
Horrible.
Uh, eleven and fourteen, another roundabout in Victoria that opened on August twenty-ninth. Uh, five and eleven, I mentioned that by the Dairy Queen. That one's got a couple of things going on there. There's two roundabouts there. The northerly one, we found way more poor soils than we thought. So that one's gonna take some time to figure it out. When, the attention was to have the, act both roundabouts and done this year, but the second one won't, the one at Highway Five won't happen till next year. So we're not gonna close the road. Highway Five will remain open this year. Uh, we'll get it done next year in time for the big project. So we're hoping that the roundabout will be complete, uh, mid-summer of twenty-six to coordinate with the huge project. So that gives you an update on construction. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we'll move on.
The trails for, um, uh, adjacent to Bavaria from Eighty-Second to Five, is that doing, are we doing that this year or next year? Next year? And then the trail from, that we're doing on behalf of Chaska, from Community Center down to Audubon, is that gonna be completed this year or next year?
I'm Angler.
There's a trail that we're handling on behalf of Chaska?
Oh, yeah, that'll be all part of the big, oh, will it be open? Good question. I don't know. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. The grading work for sure, but whether it'll be paved and open, who knows? So we're just gonna run, Eric's gonna run through this, and then Dan's gonna come up and talk about the, uh, the phasing plan for the big, big project.
All right. Good morning. Uh, here's an image. This was one of the final pieces of the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. That was the two-year plan that we prepared from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, and that identified twenty projects to be realized over twenty years pending, uh, leveraging funding for many of the pieces. Those twenty pieces all had independent utility, and we set it up that way to maximize the financial competitiveness for outside funds. Uh, the, the highlights in green are, those are all projects that are under construction right now. Uh, you know, over fifty million dollars of investment. Lyndon already hit on, uh, most of these here. Uh, but, but we have Victoria-led, Chan Aston-led, U of M-led, and a Carver County-led project all under construction. Next year, we begin the big Highway Five project, and, uh, in twenty twenty-eight, when we're all done with this round of work, we have two pieces left of the plan. Uh, downtown Victoria, which I'm gonna talk about at the tail end of this presentation, and that, the north end of Rolling Acres Road from Interlochen to Highway Seven. Uh, so to not be too repetitive here, this is Eighty-Second Street, and again, as Lyndon said, it'll, it'll be completed, uh, by the, uh, in November, so underway.
Yeah, that photo was taken yesterday.
It's fresh, yeah.
How long does it take to cure? You said you poured it yesterday. How long does it take to cure?
A cure?
Okay, awesome. I knew it's a while.
Here, here's a couple images of what the University of Minnesota, Minnesota Landscape Arboretum are doing. Uh, so they started construction this year on their new access point. That's opposing Minnewashia Parkway, um, here. And so that's a, that's a new road, new entry, new way of ticketing. Um, that will, that's, they're getting that done and established. Uh, so in twenty twenty-seven, at late twenty-seven, when Highway Five's all done and opened up, uh, the signal here at Minnewashia Parkway will just work, and that will be, become their primary entrance point. The image on the, the top right, that's an artist's rendering of what this could look like as they establish it. Again, that's a roughly a fifteen mil-, million dollar investment from what I've heard that the U of M is leading. Here is the, uh, image. North is to your right. Uh, this is Crimson Bay Road. City of Chan Aston is leading this one. This will be completed this year, too. Uh, severing access, uh, of Crimson Bay Road at Highway Five. This sets us up for the big project, too. That's Crimson Bay Road opposes the existing arboretum entrance.
So that's not gonna be a right-in, right-out on a, on the five?
Full closure, uh, cul-de-sac, uh, at the end of Crimson Bay Road, and it's tying into Seventy-Eighth, which ties into Highway Forty-One. So redirecting those driveways north. And here's the west side of downtown Victoria. This was the City of Victoria-led project that Lyndon hit on as well. Um, not only improvements to Highway Five and County Road Eleven, but also extending Steiger Lake Road, uh, Steiger Lake Lane to the west, uh, aligning with their development. That's underway. Uh, as Lyndon said, due to weather and soil conditions, uh, the work on Hi-, Highway Five Roundabout is gonna happen next year. It's very much coordinated with our, our other work going on, but it should all be, uh, the plan is to have it all opened up by Fourth of July, when, and that's a key moment that Dan's gonna talk about with the staging of Highway Five. I'll switch, turn this over to Dan.
All right. Well, good morning. I know you've heard a lot of this, uh, information before, so I'll try and pace myself and give a little bit of time for questions. So, see, this is the laser, the bottom. Okay. All right. Well, uh, as Eric said, we're gonna talk a little bit about the staging, give you a quick project overview. You've seen this before, but if you want to queue up the, the video, uh, this is just gonna take you through the project that we're about to build. So I'll kind of talk over this to a degree, but, um, I know you've, you've seen it before, but it's, it's, again, a, a, a massive project, and it, it's really important in our minds to keep reminding the public of what they're gonna get at the end. Uh, this is not gonna be an easy project to build. It's gonna be inconvenient. It's gonna be a challenge to actually get it done. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be a massive improvement for the area, and we're, that's what we're really, uh, focused on trying to, to get this message out, that this is what we're trying to build. There's nothing left of what was original. And, uh, it's gonna be, uh, quite an operational improvement everywhere we look on this project. So this is the downtown Victoria, the Commercial Avenue Roundabout. When I'm talking about staging, refer to that roundboat as the Commercial Avenue Roundabout, and that area that they're driving onto the bottom of the screen, that's all gonna be under construction at the beginning of, of, uh, our closure year. And that's gonna be, those businesses are gonna be accessed through, uh, just the construction, uh, in and out, uh, under, under gravel condition. And so, uh, you can refer to these images in your head as I'm talking about the staging.
But that isn't the part that's funded?
Yep, that's in this one.
I thought that was a part of the...
Downtown project?
Yeah.
Tell them this one included.
Okay.
And, and just a question, can someone, if you're going west...
Did you want to pause for a second? Go ahead.
All right, and can you go back, Colin, just to that roundabout, right there, uh, right there? So this is going west, so this white car...
That white car's looking, uh, yeah, that, that white car is looking west.
On the top left is the fire station, right?
Yep, so it's going west.
You're right, yep.
So that white car, if it took the right turn, went past the gas station, can it get to downtown Victoria on that street?
Not, not at this time. That's, that's the ultimate community plan, but that connection is not yet made.
Yeah, that would be part of the next project that Tom's referring to, connecting that street and the town.
Okay.
It's set up for the future, but right now it accesses really the private businesses and, and, uh...
That would be a scientific project.
Yeah, so then as we move ahead and we get to that Floyd intersection, can you take a right then to get to the Noble Lion?
The Noble Lion.
Or to Vic's?
At the four-way stop.
At the four-way stop now, or is that right hand gonna be eliminated?
Eric, do you wanna?
Yeah, I think that will, that will, should remain open, but the actual vision through downtown isn't set yet. We've done, we did some preliminary work in the study. That needs to be restarted. And I have some slides at the tail end about that downtown piece, how we lead it and some next steps.
Okay.
Yeah, you're probably getting into that last segment right in the middle, uh, that, that this one is setting up for, and, and so...
Right, but the, the question then, if the Floyd intersection, five and eleven, that's gonna be the very last piece. So why this is all happening, people can still take a right-hand turn, go by Floyd's and get to downtown Victoria. That has been a common question.
Okay.
They don't want to lose access to downtown Victoria.
For sure.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. And of course, the overpass for the trail network in Victoria.
That's at Steiger, right?
Yep, yep, that's right, right, it's, uh, that's Steiger. So we're gonna be looking up at Rolling Acres Road at this point here, so. Got, of course, the Apple House on, on the right side here, the former, uh, will be the former Apple House at some point here, so this is gonna be a significant makeover of this area. And, uh, this is gonna be one of the first things that gets done on the job. This, uh, north-south segment, uh, that, that, that portion of the project is gonna be in, in twenty twenty-six to create this, uh, this north-south, uh, section of highway. So you're gonna see the significance of the changes that are gonna be occurring here in twenty-six.
And there again, that's the, basically a four-lane, and those, the two lanes going west, that's just gonna bottle further west as the construction process takes place.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're vastly improving the efficiency of, of this segment of highway. Certainly, there'll be other areas that get taxed. So this is Rolling Acres, so we want all this done, uh, before Highway Five is closed. That's what we're trying to accomplish here. So this Rolling Acres is gonna be able to handle traffic much more efficiently, much more safely, uh, after, uh, after we're done with it, and then we, we get into Highway Five being closed, and Rolling Acres is gonna see a lot of that traffic being rerouted. So here we are looking at the arboretum access as it will be in the future, across the lake. You can see, uh, if you're looking across the lake, how significant that change is. All of that is a lot of peat underneath there, so that was certainly not easy, uh, getting that from bridge to a widened section that we have. Of course, the new access going into the arboretum, um, new signal, a lot of discussion on, on that in terms of this now being a four-way. But we're quite confident that, uh, it's, it's going to be, uh, a vast safety improvement, and many of the concerns about all the trips leaving arboretum going to the north is, is not really gonna materialize based on how this is, this whole highway system is set up. Of course, the small bridge segment, section, that used to be in early planning phases of this, a much longer bridge, so there's about ten million dollars of, of benefit to get that thing down to the section it is now. So I think you probably remember that from some of the earlier updates.
And has the new bridge design been approved by environmentalists and...
Yep, we've gone through every, every phase now, so we are now officially approved and authorized, so that was, that was a big moment.
That's a big win for us.
So here is five and forty-one. Uh, so this is actual live, not live, real traffic volumes that we're talking about. We don't, we don't just paint the cars on here. This is actually the volumes that, that, uh, we, we did some of the modeling on.
That's the current underpass, right, that we built, county-built, and then there's gonna be a new one, that's all, that's gonna go north-south.
Do this to raise your credit score fast. Have you seen?
Wait, you mean let that play?
I had some nice static slides, but Eric took them off for the sake of me talking through you.
So just, uh, for everybody, I don't live too far from here on the south side of Highway Five, and we would desire to get to Victoria. We would basically get on Highway Five and take the shoulder in the opposite direction to get to the arboretum entrance, to get into the park, and then go through the park. That's before the bridge, the tunnel, and it was a little, always a little hairy, uh, so, big change.
So the Commissioner Faes point, Orpens point, if, um, if we want to get from east of forty-one to downtown Victoria, we would probably go south on forty-one, Eighty-Second back through, and then weave our way up, up Bavaria. Is that accurate?
Under what condition, under, under stage condition, or what?
Yeah, when, uh, when the bridge, when everything's closed on five.
Highway Five, yeah, to, to Victoria, you're, you're prob-, you're prob-, you're probably gonna be going down Eighty-Second Street, it's most likely otherwise. Highway, Highway Seven is another option later in the year, but, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll start stepping through this, uh, each phase.
But the forty-one intersection with five is next year?
Yep, yep, so we're trying to get that all buttoned up in twenty-six, so that intersection is operating highly efficiently for the five closure. So this is the overall project schedule status, the red line's where we are now, uh, graded out is what we've, uh, done. And I, I do like to note the, the significance of, of this timing, uh, on, on the job of this scale. Uh, this is generally a three-to-four-year delivery effort. Um, there's, uh, authorization driving the timelines on this, so we're trying to hit, hit twenty-five. Uh, it, everything ended up being overlapping concurrent. Again, you mentioned environmental clearances, all of that is typically a long duration to get through all that stuff. The value of that is significant in, in the, in the industry. We look at each year as, as inflation, uh, costs, and so you're talking about five, close to five million dollars, uh, or, uh, three to five million dollars easily in savings from getting this done this year. So the, the, the drive to, by the county to get this accomplished was many millions of dollars on the cost of this project saved to, to actually accomplish it, uh, in, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven versus later years. Um, iteration for construction is generally three years. That's where we started out with on this job. It was a three-year project, uh, multiple years of closure on Highway Five. So we'll talk a little bit about how we got to where we got to in a second here, so, uh, we've, we've basically, uh, down to twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, and, uh, the, the brunt of it here, I think, is best explained in the, in the graphics here, so. Uh, next steps before I touch on staging is, uh, the bid date. It's coming up, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, right around the corner, is a huge moment. We're gonna find out, uh, what this job is actually gonna cost. So that, uh, has, has now been cleared. We have our federal authorizations, we have our state signs, assigned plans, we've got all the agency permits, uh, in, in line. So we are now to the point where we're just waiting to have the contractors come aboard and tell us what they can build it for. So that'll be a big moment here. The award date is expected late, uh, November, mid-December. Um, and we'll have another public open house right before construction. We feel that it's, it's best to get to the point where construction's right around the corner, uh, and then folks will be coming out there.
The other thing we don't have yet is the signed agreement for the rural grant that we talked to the federal D F T while we were in Washington, D C, to make sure that they've got that processed on time. So that's the last thing we're waiting for on the equivalent side.
And we're not gonna avoid, uh, I'm sorry, what's the name of the, the equal?
Yeah, D V Eagle. No, we're not, we're moving ahead and business as usual. We can't wait for that decision to happen. I think that's almost twenty percent.
Yeah.
It's a significant number.
It's a significant number, but, uh, most of the contractors of this scale are gonna be so wired with the processes, the subs lined up for, to, to meet the goal, though. You know, we're, we're at least... You know, we're, we're at least not expecting a dramatic impact. The timing to actually change that is, it's just not months, it's gonna be a while.
And we get good contractor interest, or?
Oh, yeah, yep, we're, we're getting, we're getting calls from, uh, the, the big outfits that are getting themselves lined up for this one, so.
Wonderful.
Yes, so, good news.
Because of the timing and what we've done to date, we're not gonna be impacted by that greenhouse gas law?
We're exempt from that.
We're exempt.
Lynn, what's the bid climate like? Labor, materials, and contractors? I'm guessing two, two twelve will be done, will, like, Mathelwitz or whatever be?
Actually, pretty good, I mean, we've experienced, we're talking about this in DC too, I think when the feds passed the IAJA, that was a big federal bill, they, contractors were thinking there'd be a lot of construction projects coming. That hasn't materialized for whatever reason, MINDOT being behind maybe. So the local projects, we've done really well on bids, like Forty-one Anglo, I think we've got twelve bidders on that, really competitive.
So they're hungry, we probably won't see?
They think we'll get, we're hopeful.
Okay.
Yeah, we're hopeful, yeah.
And the other favorable I'll, I'll mention is fuel prices, that's a huge part of a job this size, huge, and so those are on the, on the decline here, so that's gonna be very favorable for the bid environment right now.
And hopefully, some of us are still around when this is all done. It'll be interesting to ask the question then, if MINDOT would've did this project?
We wouldn't have anything yet.
Right.
Right.
And the time and energy.
And the two-twelve?
Yep.
We wouldn't be around. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, so I'll, I'll give you a rundown of, uh, the details on the staging, and, uh, it'll be a very high level because obviously there's a hundred points on, on everything I'm talking about, but the primary goals when we, when we went after this thing is, uh, you know, it always starts with the, the standard. We're gonna try and minimize public, uh, impact during construction, that can be any number of ways. I mean, it can mean keeping the road open and doing it over a longer period of time, it can mean, uh, uh, shortening closure durations and trying to go incredibly fast, there's, there's a whole bunch of different ways you play this one out. We, we quickly came to the point where this one is gonna have to have some closure, uh, of, of some period of time. Uh, keeping it open under traffic, it was, the costs were incredibly prohibitive, and, uh, we got to the point of how could, how fast can we build it? And that's, that's really what we set after, is, is we're, we're looking at three years of construction, uh, two years of closures. So what we set out for is two years of construction, one year of, uh, of highway closure for five, and that's what we tried to do. It was, it was definitely a challenge, uh, to try and fit that puzzle together and actually make it possible. You can set goals for these contractors, well, what happens if your goals are completely made up and pie in the sky type goals? They will price that into their, their bids. And so you have to do this thoughtfully, that they legitimately can do what you're trying to get them to do, and you can show them the path to do it. And then at that point, the contractors can put some good hard pricing on these, on these jobs without bidding at a ton of risk for if they were to fail on the schedule. So I think we have a very constructible schedule, it's aggressive, but it's, it is doable. Um, and so what we're also looking to do is minimize the duration of closure to downtown Victoria. Uh, obviously, that's been a huge topic throughout the begin, throughout the beginning of the project, is, is the, uh, impact of the downtown businesses. And then, uh, we had to maintain suitable access to the Arboretum, millions of visitors here, half a million visitors. Uh, that had to be a seamless, uh, seamless process throughout the project, and then effective alternative routes, and that process started years ago. Really, the planning of eighty-second Street was step one in what I would consider the staging plan for this project. I mean, that really is not connected, but ultimately is gonna be incredibly valuable and significant to this. That was, that was really CIP planning, but it was a stage in this project, is, is, I would, I would offer it. And so that was, that was a goal, but we also had some routing considerations for north-south and such that we built into the staging plan, so when we look at the, um, the regional, uh, area here, we're gonna, we're gonna see a lot of trips get rerouted. We all know that people, my people might use seven or two-twelve as alternatives to five during construction. Um, that's just a known, known reality that we look at as we look at, uh, the, the impacts of, of construction, but we do have some good alternative routes. For those that are gonna be in the, uh, construction area, in twenty-twenty-six is when, when things are gonna show up, that's when it's gonna really start up here. And you're gonna see a closure on the north side of, uh, five at forty-one and Bavaria Road. What we're doing is we're trying to keep one of those north-south routes open at all times, either thirteen or forty-one. And so we're staggering the constructions, this job becomes very linear in nature as to how, how things need to play out, which again ties to the trying to get it done in two years, but forty-one's gonna get closed. Um, and we're trying to get the north side done. Highway five is gonna be, expect delays is what I would offer, is the stage. When they start this project, it's gonna be, the intersection can be half at a time type of construction, barricades, barrels, and a signal with less, less movements than, than it did before. So you, you will see delays at five and forty-one during construction, but five is still gonna be open. Now, that being said, people will be having alternate routes during off-peak times, it'll be perfectly fine to drive through, but during the peaks, people might have to be thinking about their alternate trip, uh, time, uh, through the, through that intersection. But, uh, moving forward here into, uh, June through October, we're gonna get to Rolling Acres Road, that's gonna be construction under a full closure environment, but then forty-one is open, so then the north-south route again is gonna be, uh, is gonna be forty-one at that time. The south leg of forty-one is gonna be that, therefore closed, Century's gonna see a lot of traffic. Uh, but we are also continuing to construct Highway five at forty-one half of the time, so that's, that's, uh, still gonna be under traffic. And then we get into September, October, uh, we're finishing up, uh, five and forty-one on the five segment. All of this being under traffic, still finishing up the south leg of, um, forty-one, and then we get into the roundabout construction at, on Rolling Acres Road and Interlock, and that's in the fall, but under closure. And then, uh, you've got the north-south routes done at that stage. Five and forty-one is operating a, a ton better than it does today to handle the, the traffic that is going to be hitting that intersection during the full closure. So we get into April of twenty-seven, this is the very big year, uh, for, for five, it's, it's, uh, everyday matters in this schedule, we're starting in April, uh, as soon as we possibly can, start widening out, uh, uh, highway in a, into the Causeway area. Um, and so we are, uh, basically starting all the way from Victoria, uh, up to the Arboretum entrance, which is fully completed at this point. We've gotten to the current entrance, is now, uh, fully, fully completed, it's not converted to an exit only yet, but we're, we're done all the way up to that point. So that's gonna be April through June, full closure. Uh, the only difference here in this next stage, June through September, is that, that Commercial Avenue roundabout that I was referring to in the picture, that's gonna be done, uh, by about, uh, July. Uh, that's, that's, uh, the access into those businesses in the downtown, uh, area, the, the gas stations and such, they'll be able to drive into the completed roundabout as opposed to through a work zone, uh, to get, get there, and whatever.
So, uh, to, uh, my friends on Lake Minnewaşta who are worried about increased traffic, this appears to be a time when there will be that, is the, is the now, is the original access to the Arboretum gonna be open for people to come down forty-one and get into the Arboretum? So that, until twenty-seven or end of twenty-seven, that then'll be a, is that gonna be a right in, right out?
They're still full, uh, fully accessing the Arboretum through the current access at this time.
Through tw, through twenty-seven?
Yep, all the way through the end, it's gonna be just a big switch-over moment in which it goes current access point to in the fall.
Okay, 'cause that would be a disaster.
Yeah, yeah, so right, right he, right here, this is-
It'll be very efficient, 'cause the road's closed to the west. So the only people that go are the Arboretum visitors.
Yeah, it's like a private driveway, the, the, Highway five is effectively a private four-lane highway to the Arboretum, so they've got the best access they've ever had, uh, by, by a long shot.
For a little while.
And Minewaşta Parkway is getting no traffic from, uh, you know, the reroute traffic, zero, 'cause it's closed. So I'd say at this stage, everybody should be, should be content. So, except people trying to get through five, they're, they're taking-
And then the, the gentleman at the end of the blue dots there that built the new house, I'm in a Washington there, he's got his own private driveway then, right in, right out?
Yeah, he, he's gonna be driving through a work zone, is what it's gonna be. They're, they're gonna grade up a, a dirt route, and they're gonna let him get in and out, but it's certainly far from anything that you'd consider to be a finished driveway, he's just gonna be able to get in and out.
But his ultimate driveway is right?
Right in, right out, that's what's going to happen when it's done, yes.
Dan, do you bring in a bunch of dirt to make that go four-lane, or how's that?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's certainly a, a fair amount of fill here, and we've got, I, I can't remember, Eric was asking about that, I can't remember our, our balance on this job. But, yes, there's gonna be quite a bit of earth moving around this project from point A to point B.
Is any of that coming back from Workman Hill, or is, where does that come from?
Um, at this point, I'd have to look at the balance, in, in most cases on job this size, what we do is, is we, we let these bigger contractors, uh, decide how they wanna bid that in the project, 'cause most cases, these, these, the big comp, the big companies are gonna have other jobs in the area where they need dirt, or they wanna take the dirt from here elsewhere, and they actually bid that into their pricing, and that gets into the actual final numbers.
Dave Hemsey, is that an option, if they need more dirt, to pull it off, pull it up years ago? No?
Now, now once the decision was made. Talking about Minewaşta Regional Park?
Yeah, that big hill.
I will admit that hill is a little too big for my age now. Wow.
Create a bunny hill for Commissioner.
If you wanna dump that hill, I'd break something going down that hill.
It's a good question, we, we do build sources of dirt into some projects, but in this one, because there's so much development happening in the area, we, we're letting this one run to the bidders.
That's all muck.
Is it? Okay, I didn't know.
Taken out of Highway, old Highway five, ready.
Take the dirt.
And Dan, did you really say that everyone's gonna be happy at this point?
Yeah.
That prediction might be incorrect.
Okay, all right, I, I will explain to them why they could be happy, to be happy, and, as opposed to the alternatives, but yes, uh, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, it is gonna be construction. Yeah, um-
But Dan, maybe part of the communication, 'cause of what I've observed on Highway two-twelve, of the big truck traffic that's going on County Road thirty-three, right downtown Norwood?
Yeah.
The amount of those trucks that are going in, the same thing, if those trucks are gonna go forty-one to seven and then go west to get the material, or are they gonna go down forty-one to get on two-twelve to go west to get the material? Those huge side dump trucks, that's gonna be a big part of this, and-
Yeah, a, absolutely, and, you know, a lot, a lot of the, the trucking on this job ends up being aggregates, so what's the nearest pit? As, as huge competitive advantage among contractors is what's the source of their patuminous, what's the source of their aggregate, uh, for, for Class five. The, the common excavation, we call it, the moving along, they're gonna keep most of it on-site as best they can, but those exports and imports, they will probably balance it with the nearby job, is what generally happens, so... All right, so here is another big moment in time, in twenty-twenty-seven, September, we're looking to open that segment from downtown Victoria to thirteen. So we're trying to get that, that segment of five back open as soon as we can, uh, is, and that's, we believe September is as soon as they can get that segment built. But at that point, the last segment to five that is left under closure is from thirteen to the current Arboretum access point. And, and then that is, is a very critical month in this whole schedule in which we hit, um, October first. October first is the big moment in which the signal at, uh, Minewaşta Parkway and the new Arboretum, uh, access would be turned on, and people would shift to the new access point, the old access point would be closed, and that, that would be the way in, uh, or, well, actually, we move it to exit only, 'cause we're not closing it yet at that stage. Sorry, misspoke, but we will open it up at the new location, and then people will still continue leaving at the, at the current, uh, exit for, for that stage. And so that's gonna be a, a huge milestone in the project, and now that we've-
Okay, so, so back to my original concern about Minewaşta Parkway, this would be now an opportunity for them to go up Minewaşta Parkway if they're heading east as a customer of the Arboretum.
If they're heading east, yes, that, that would be-
Or they could go up the, the original a, access.
In theory, yes, they, they could, they could choose to go that way if they're going east up to seven. That's why we kept the existing access point for this initial stage open. Um, there will be a time, uh, there will be a time in which, uh, we'll have to close it for a short period to convert it to exit only, but for now, it's still open, so the, the quickest way to the east and to the cities is going to be using the current access.
Okay.
So I, I would say it's very, very minimal, 'cause most people are gonna continue doing what they're already doing, which is going up the current access and taking a right. And, uh, it'll, it'll be an easy right to, to make, so I think that'll be fairly minimal in this stage. But what, this is a, a unique stage in which we do feel there might be a period of time where westbound is open, but eastbound is not, while we're trying to finish up that, that deep, uh, widening, uh, it's called a column-supported embankment over, over the, you know, the wildland areas. And so we might have eastbound closed, westbound's open, Highway five's gonna be, um, uh, open, but we'll, we'll still have a eastbound detour at this point.
So Dan, full closure on, on five from April to September, and then partial closure starting in October?
Yes, yep.
So, I, I don't wanna say it wrong, but I thought that five was gonna have full closure for up to twenty-eight months, had we not pieced all this stuff together, is that accurate? We went from twenty-eight months of closure down to six?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what's designed in.
So I wanna make the point, because I know we're gonna have upset business owners, but when you tell the story of twenty-eight months versus six, and going from whatever it was, less than ten, eleven, twelve million dollars with Victoria's participation shrinking every step, there's good stories to be told here.
Over and over.
It's probably not the right time to say it, but I'll say it anyway. I think that wherever the signage is, it's routing folks, um, we owe it to them to, offer them a QR code or a direct link or something like that, 'cause you're not gonna have every, every, every business sign, but there's a lot of businesses that will be significantly impacted for those six months, and they're, they're, they're revenue year, they're revenue months. It's not like the doldrums of winter, it's their revenue months. And so if there's any way that when we're entering those areas, if there's like a, you know, carvercounty.com slash downtown Victoria to quickly get people there, then we get less complaints, I think that R L B's set up to win on the communication side too, and the business owners can feel like they're part of it, we don't have to have sandwich boards everywhere.
I think the, uh, I think the Victoria Business Council, I know, last time we devastated them with the bridge and, and everything else, boy, they were organized with a campaign that had a V for Victoria, right?
Yep.
And so somehow in conjunction with them, but I'm sure they're, they're getting ready, so.
And to Tom's point, it might make sense too, to have token funding, I'm sure it's baked in there for marketing, but to give them a chunk that they can guide or they can spend themselves, I think it goes a long way. The impact that we're gonna have to their business is significant, the savings will have a significant, but I don't know, ten thousand dollars to, you know, for them to deal with it, then we don't have to chew on it, let, let them handle it.
Sure. Dan, what are we, what's the thinking with deadlines, incentive payments, penalties? What's the, is that related to the environment, or what, what are we doing with the project?
Yeah, well, we, we evaluated incentives on this, and it's an evaluation process, is it worth it? It's tax money, it's like anything else, I mean, in the project, is, is it worth the money to give them the benefits? And so we did an incentive evaluation on it, and what it comes down to is a lot of projects, the incentives are, are valuable. They, they, they end up short in duration, there's, there's value to the public to that shortened duration, and so it's worth paying, paying this incentive. Where, where this one had some challenges to actually justify whether or not the incentive was the most effective way to do it, 'cause you're either, you're either, uh, de-incentivizing them to, to get it done and, and not miss the deadline, or you're incentivizing them to get it done early. The, the benefit incentives comes from them having all kinds of options to hit their milestone, where, where they've got some flexibilities to actually finish early, and we know what's in the schedule, and so if they can shave off a month or two from the way they build, build the job, we'll pay them for that, that's, that's an effective way to use incentives. On this one, everything is baked down to the working day, everything is linear, one thing builds up another, any single delay that occurs on this job, we have to have a discussion with the contractors to determine whether or not it's a justified delay, otherwise there's damages involved. So because it's so linear, there's a scenario where they can be very, very aggressive towards claims of delay, and they can get twenty days of delay claims, for example, for weather conditions or utility conflicts or whatever the case may be, and then they can miss our deadline by twenty-one days, and then we can end up paying incentives for justified delays despite missing the deadline. And we, we feel that there's so much linear nature to the way this plan is put together, that there's way too much risk to incentivize, where, where, what we're doing is we're pushing a lot of these deadlines up to the absolute tightest timeline that a work-in-day schedule could accommodate, and we're, we're putting in substantial completions a few weeks ahead of time. And if we can manage to two, two weeks of delay, three weeks of delay, we'll still hit our goal of October first. And so that, that is the way we, we approached this one and ran through the MINDOT office on alternative delivery, they agreed, because the way this one's built, we're better off pushing to the fastest they can do it, hold them to it, and then we'll accommodate, uh, justified delays and, and hit our milestone. Uh, another way, w- we just really did not wanna get to a point where we paid incentives while they missed the actual time we needed, and that's, there was, there was risk on this one.
Sounds like he thought that through. What about night work? Is there night work involved, or is that not allowable with neighbors, et cetera?
There's, there, there would be some situations, I, I'd have to look back at all the different elements of the- There's, there, there would be some situations where I, I'd have to look back at all the different elements of the project in which we'd have some, uh, after hours. But generally it's, it's not significant in, in this one. Uh, there's going to be, because we have closures, we can generally do things through working hours. Uh, where we get more nighttime work is where you have under traffic and you gotta, but like, for example, you know, there's, there's going to be some situations where I might have to do a nighttime for, uh, a certain effort or activity, but not much.
I, I'd imagine that your timeline isn't as tight as you say it is. Was there, and I just, I just want to hear from you. Was there any consideration for trying to get open before the start of school? Cause I know that that's created a lot, particularly in Lisa's district and the district I represent with forty-one. I know it's not your fault, but was there any consideration to say, is there any way to pull it back three weeks and get open before first of school?
Yeah, we have, so I'm going to go back to our timelines here. Um, we have October first as getting eastbound. That, that is a planned, uh, opening of October first. We're actually in September in, in our completion schedules by contract.
Okay.
Of, of, uh, a bit before that.
Yep.
And so it's going to be close, but we, we can't make a guarantee for, for Labor Day.
And I'd imagine that the net traffic flow in the morning would be east. Is there any consideration for making that an eastbound only for the morning hours to accommodate school traffic for the weeks between, um, school opening and, and, um, that road opening?
Oh, switching the flow.
Yeah. Is that even a, I don't want to get up on my skis if that's not even a.
Well, the Victoria students are going to be going to either Chanah High School on Lyman or, right?
Yeah.
It's a fair question. I mean, under huge metro area systems where you got traffic going in both directions, they do have situations where you actually reverse the lane flows. It, it tends to be incredibly expensive to switch traffic control every single day. And so it, it, it tends to be a cost benefit scenario.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't gone down that path because we didn't think it would trigger it here. Because we're talking more so like weeks, uh, is, but, um, it, it's a fair question. I, I, we have not gone a whole lot further.
And I guess if you're looking at traffic flow, you also have been talking there too, which they'll go north to seven. Yep. So I don't even know if, I don't know how many people would be impacted. I know that the perception is significant and I also know eighty-second is your relief valve. So that's, that's a path to get to Chan. But I just asked the question because I know it will come up and I know that we've had good partnership with school district and RE will be equipped to answer those things as well.
We can maybe get you a better answer as far as the details of what, what that reality would be. Alright, well, a lot of these questions are leading into my last slide here. So, uh, Eric's got some other things to cover as well. So I'll, I'll try and wrap this up with the, the big next step is preparing everyone for this. We're going to bid it soon and we're going to be on our way. Uh, we'll have the open house planned in the, in the spring, but what I will offer is at this point, all the prep work for what's going to happen. I mean, it's already started. Uh, it is, we've, we've talked to the downtown gas station in Victoria about truck access and built that into our staging plan, how they're going to get in and out. They're fully aware of, of what's, what's coming. Uh, we've had a lot of these discussions already. We just need to continue them. I mean, that's the reality is you need to continue to prep everybody that it's, it's, it's not going to like, uh, Commissioner Lynch, you mentioned, this is, you know, not, not going to be great. It's construction and we do have to keep continuing the, the comment that we're doing the best we can. Expect, expect, you know, a fairly low bar as far as, you know, uh, what you, you have to deal with with construction. It's not going to be convenient. But we're, we're, we're doing a lot of things to minimize your impacts and here's what we're doing. And we're during, during the process, what we're doing is we're, we're continuing those communications with these folks to give them, uh, tools, tips. How are your business customers supposed to get to your store during this stage? And that's the type of stuff that, that often gets overlooked and missed. And we are, we are spending a fair amount of energy on, uh, the, the one-on-one discussions for each individual business. They have a different need. They have a different story. And so we're, we're putting a lot of energy into that in terms of how this would really need to be delivered, uh, in terms of, uh, keeping each, uh, each business or stakeholder in, informed about, uh, what's going to be needed for them. Uh, we've got proactive targeting to bus in transit, police fire. That's all part of the process. That has to be well-wired before this project starts. Um, and then we're trying to spend as much time as we can listening to the individual circumstances, needs, people say if all my business comes from the north, how are they going to get here? So, uh, those are the things that will help and provide tools for them. And then, uh, like, uh, we just mentioned, we're trying to set some accurate expectations. Hopefully we over-deliver, uh, and under-promise is what we're trying to, trying to do here. So.
It's a good model.
Yeah. So that's, that is, uh, my last slide here before the funding starts. So any last questions on staging or what we're going to build? Feel free, otherwise I'll pass it off to Eric.
Hello, Eric. Alright. Yep. Funding and agreements. Here's, here's a lot of words on this slide, but we've had a lot of success in. Yeah. A lot of success in, uh, leveraging outside funds. So the current estimate, total project estimate stands at a hundred and twenty-two million. And, uh, we've leveraged over a hundred million now, uh, through twelve different sources. And that's what's on this slide. Federal and state funds and, um, the local share, uh, as was already discussed, has continued to drop along the way with our different funding success. And as we went to, we were able to, to fund the whole project. Remember we started with a part and we grew, we were developing the whole project. And it, it all worked out to where we can deliver the, the whole project. As Lyndon mentioned, our last award was earlier, early this year, the rural, and that was a little bit influx. But again, we, we've, we're on our second round of, uh, of, um, edits on the funding agreement. So we expect that soon. We hit the, as Dan mentioned, we hit the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We had fifty million dollars in twenty twenty-five months and the federal fiscal year closes, uh, are closed September fifteenth. So everybody worked really hard to, to get us there and, uh, preserve all the funding we have.
Lyndon, if, uh, that bid comes in, say five million dollars lower, do we pull back some of our eleven point eight and redeploy it or does everybody get like a share of it?
Yeah, probably lose their own money. Right? We have to budget some for chain orders.
Right.
Yeah, I think, right?
Yeah.
We and the cities would probably be the safest.
Okay.
We'd want to spend all that other money first.
Yep, yep. I didn't know if it was, if we had to be in for so much or.
As, as it stands, the estimate, the, the, the construction cost is just under eighty percent. Eighty percent's the max. It can be federally funded. You have to have twenty percent non-federal managed.
Okay.
But we'll have to work the numbers after we get bids. But yeah, I agree, I agree with Lyndon. Agreements, uh, with the cities. I have the next slide on the university. So we, there's three things we need our city partners to do. We're shooting for mid-October for their, their council meetings to approve, uh, the JPA between the county and the cities. As you know, that establishes the financial and maintenance and, uh, partnership for the project. We also have the cooperative agreement. So that's between MINDOT and Cover County and Chan Hassen and Victoria. Same thing from MINDOT's perspective, um, raise that out and municipal consent waiver. So normally MINDOT led this project, uh, they would need municipal consent. Since the county's leading that, we need to, we need to obtain that. But we've been working so closely with the partners for the last six years. Like we've been doing this together as we go and updating the councils as we go. And I think the councils are prepared, um, for consent item agendas for this. We need to bring those same agreements here too. We, we, we need, we need, uh, the cooperative agreement in place before award. So that'll be coming this fall.
Does the contractor handle utilities or is that separate? Cause it seems like utilities always delays us, including the forty-one project, and it's not your problem, but is, can we start that earlier? Or do we have to wait till bid?
We already have it.
But that's not rolled up through the contract that's out for bid. That's separate?
Uh, it is, it is separate. It's all private utility relocations that they've coordinated efforts. I mean, we're, we're actually coordinating a lot of that as a team.
And dumb question, do we pay for that or does the utilities have to pay for that?
They have to pay for their own relocations. Uh, so unless they have an easement, it's all paid for by, uh, private utility. It's all scheduled management.
Okay. Thank you.
That's one thing about, one advantage of it being a state road, that MINDOT has a bigger stick than county.
Yes.
They order them to move.
Yep.
And we give them a schedule and if they fail to meet that, two twelve's one way. An example where there was a delay because of the utilities there, where we can actually, with MINDOT's help, go after the utilities to pay part of the change order cost to delay the job. So that is an advantage the state has, counties do not have.
Do we have a stick on forty-one or no?
On the forty-one part, forty-one itself, not Angler.
Forty-one Angler, the whole.
Depends where the utility is, where the delay was. Forty-one, maybe. It's Angler, no.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, one, one item that came in later in the development here was, uh, we didn't have MINDOT support for the pedestrian crossing treatment on Highway forty-one at seventy-eighth street. That's the first intersection north of Highway five, and that's very important to the city, uh, and connectivity. So we came up with a solution that we're going, that we're doing outside of the big project, but concurrent. And so that's building a, uh, a pedestrian connection under forty-one and tying that into seventy-eighth street. So that's something we're going to work into the agreement as well. And again, deliver together with the project in twenty-six.
Okay. So the west side of that on the bottom is going into Westwood?
Yes. Yep.
I drove through there on Sunday morning and holy cow, uh, the traffic down to Tannaduna and everything, quite a mess.
Yep. I think it's.
No, because their church services are.
Yeah, I think it's always that way.
I, they have highway patrol helping them, but.
And they have for years. They paid for that for years, that they have highway patrol.
There's a revival going on, Tom.
Hmm?
There's a revival going on.
Well, I was trying to get to a Bloody Mary then, so.
Your revival.
I'd already been to my revival.
Uh, many agreements with the U of M, uh, some completed, some underway. We, we do have the lands, we have the deals, the agreements worked out with a temporary construction license, which is like temporary easement and permanent easement agreements. Uh, we are currently almost there with the transfer of the twenty-six acres. That, that should be done mid-October from what I heard, uh, today. Uh, that's taken some time with, with, uh, getting all the paperwork in order to facilitate that transfer. We also need to amend our master easement agreement. That's the overarching agreement, uh, that recognizes all the different land commitments. To offset the impacts of the project that we're doing. And the, uh, cooperation agreement, that'll be a new agreement and that, that facilitates the financial commitments. The U of M is paying for part of the signal and they're paying for the upcharging of their underpass that's just south of this image on here.
So the green there is a bumblebee mitigation.
Yep. The, the green and, and the yellow, that is the approved final, final, uh, rusty patch area where we're going to do some habitat enhancements over those ten acres. And a part of this deal too, is the U of M will take over the maintenance in perpetuity of all this, uh, all these lands and the easement for that.
Do we got to do some milkweed for the monarchs or?
Not, no, it's, it's focused on bees.
But we don't have a monarch issue. We, that's by the by.
Right, right. Monarchs, I'm not an expert on it, but I, they're not officially on the list yet, are they?
And I think they're smarter. They can fly above the traffic versus the bees can.
I'm, I'm really glad you got this agreement in place because last week Commissioner Workman was stunned and he's anti-bee now.
Really?
That's why we got to keep confined to this little patch here.
Really? I am not allergic, but I did not, he's lying. I did not get.
You are a pro bee then?
Oh my gosh.
It's getting late.
It's not even noon and we're already crunchy. Come on guys. Bring us home, Eric.
We're in the last.
Bring us home.
This is the last, last stretch here. Down, downtown Victoria, the purple piece, the piece that remains from the old infrastructure. So the piece on the west, of course, is being built and that, that, I didn't mention it earlier, but it's being built to a four-lane width striped as a two-lane. So we'll have it set up for four lanes on the west.
Can't get anywhere.
And of course through that commercial roundabout, that's pretty much set up.
Trying to get them to stay, stay involved here. Sorry, Eric. Boys, pencil focus.
But with, with, at the conclusion of all our, our, our work that we talked about, that's getting built in twenty twenty-eight, then highway five is going to work great until you get to downtown Victoria. And so we're going to see every evening, we're going to see backups from County Road eleven south, that, that signal, the signal in downtown. It's going to back up through that commercial roundabout in peak periods, uh, halfway to Steiger Lake. So that's a problem. It's going to get harder to get across and around downtown when we have more traffic, um, queued up here. As I mentioned earlier, we don't have that vision yet. We've done it. We did enough work during the study to, uh, understand. We can, we can get four lanes through downtown without full acquisitions. We also have roundabouts now at eleven and commercial, which should calm traffic. And so I think downtown can be a more urban environment. And, you know, when you consider access and things like that, uh, traffic will be more calm than it is today.
What do you anticipate in the backup delay? Is it minutes? Is it tens of minutes?
Um.
Is it reduced by? I thought the same thing. I'm like forty seconds is not a big deal, but it's not.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to them now.
Okay.
Right. I, right. When, I think it, it's going to be more than one cycle of a signal, you know, to clear. You're going to be waiting multiple green lights before, as you're inching, uh, through in those most peak period. And so the solid line is the average peak, the peak hours and the dashed are the, the max queues. But it's something, a condition we don't want to leave in place. Like we want, we want to eliminate that as soon as we can.
Oh, we're going to tweak that signal downtown to make it more efficient, right?
Correct.
Nope.
Yep. Yep. As part of our work next year, uh, trying to get better lane geometry. So downtown and eleven work better. When they, when they are green.
Eric, any idea on how much traffic takes a right-hand turn there on Steiger Lake to get to downtown Victoria today? Is that a thousand cars a day? Is it only ten cars a day?
We have that information. I don't have it at hand though. I could follow up on that one as well. I know that pattern in is much heavier than the pattern out. Not many people, just because it's such a difficult movement, go out, out that way.
It is easy to go into that. That's a good question.
Yep. And so Lyndon said too earlier, I'm highlighting the highway, but part of this is also what do we do with the city system? And connect the commercial roundabout into downtown and give people options. That's going to be part of this work that needs to happen next.
And by the way, I said Steiger earlier, as spelled here at Steger. I see it both ways. And I know Sue Arson of the Victoria Gazette did an article years ago about what the right way to go was, but I don't have any clue anymore. Steger there.
I've always heard Steiger like tiger.
Me too. But the Germans say the second vowel.
Upon, one, once we complete the four lane, here's the queuing, the peak hour, it all works very well. So just wanted to show that. We've been focused now this year on, uh, looking at funding opportunities for this piece, for that downtown Victoria segment. Looking, seeking funds for the planning and, and, uh, construction. So we didn't, we didn't make the list of congressionally directed spending at the last cycle. Uh, hopefully we can get on that for next time. Hopefully, we can get on that for next time. We've also submitted four quarters of commerce. They had some planning funds available. We'll hear in November if successful, seeking funds to design this. Same with the governor's bill, the capital budget request, trying to get onto the governor's budget for this next session. And so we have that request in. And two funding sources, we were successful in the west side of downtown, was Ted and Teddy. That's transportation and economic development. So with the growth of city and the creation of jobs, that's attractive to that funding source. And so hopefully, we're preparing applications for that for this central part of downtown now too. Of course, last week, Commissioner Workman, Commissioner Fahy and a group, including Victoria, were out in DC at the fly-in and started to tell the story of this this part of the project. That was the first time we were talking about downtown Victoria as a priority now that I've seen.
That's it. Any questions?
Eric, could you go back to the cost breakdown where we're at the? I think this is an unbelievable project that you guys have put together and you guys have worked together so well. I'll give Lyndon credit, but also Dan and Eric, you you work together so well. If you look at it, and then the U of M is 0.87 mil and City of Victoria for 2.9 mil. And I just think this is the most unbelievable and for 122 million dollar project. But we have to keep our eye on the the prize at the end. We have to go through short-term inconvenience to get a long-term gain. And this really says it all, but this is really an unbelievable project you guys have put together. And stay ahead of it with the communication about what's happening, you guys always do. But I think that helps immensely. So anyway, congratulations, this is one heck of a project.
Thank you, it is. The City of Victoria's number 12 months ago was 12 million. That's what they were planning and budgeting for and the county's was much higher too. It worked out excellent.
It's going to be better costarily.
Yeah.
You, you three, but you three, the credit too, but also Commissioner Workman, Commissioner Fahy for their work on the TAB and all the work they've done going out to DC, just, you guys have done just a wonderful job.
Thank you note from MINDOT would be appropriate here.
Yeah, don't hold your breath.
Connie, Connie will write us a note.
Yeah, is there any, oh, MINDOT money in there? Oh, the constructions.
Yep, so we did.
6.3 mil.
Yep, MINDOT had, MINDOT had a mill and overlay plan for Highway 5. So we applied those funds, that's the 6.3 million. And MINDOT's, MINDOT's going to do some of the work in the construction phase, inspection, surveying, testing, things like that. That's going to be a partnership with the county team leading MINDOT.
Joint effort. We still get to make the final decisions, but we're going to use a lot of that people in the deal.
Nothing will hurry up like a expensive mill and overlay project in the future that you want to avoid. And I think Mary Kay's in the back wondering about her life choices this morning.
She's worried about the cash flow. When we start spending this money, how do we get the revenue in lickety-split? That's the big, big concern.
She's, she'll be the ball juggler?
Yeah, so we got to, we got to get on top of that. It's an issue this year, we kind of worked with 212, 41. We're spending so much money, we got to build our partnerships to get the money back in as constant.
Well, what a team. We we all rose to the occasion. I I love it. Good job.
This is really incredible.
All right, we are adjourned.